Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is seven o'clock. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have one proclamation this evening. For Super Bowl Sunday, do we have Mary Beth? Thank you. Mary Beth, Kevin Roberts, Bill Kennedy, and Dave Eckert. Come on up. Good evening, nice to see you all. This is the only time we get to see our friends during proclamations. Come on up, don't be shy. So we are thrilled to do the proclamation for Super Bowl, you know, as Super S-U-P-E-R. So we collect food and cans. As an elementary education school teacher, I know that the holidays are the worst. Spring, spring break, Christmas, summer. But oftentimes, we also send food home during regular weekdays in our backpack programs. So this is very important, and people are very much in need of food. You hear the term "food insecurity" these days more often than we should. And this applies across the board for not only elementary school kids, but university, as well as our citizens in our community. So thank you for doing this. I'm going to have Brenda read the proclamation.
Long after a silly football game, hunger will remain. Long after a day when most of us celebrate with food, drink, and relaxation, hunger will remain. For many children, hunger will remain. Hunger We Can Help. On February 1st, volunteers will collect canned foods at each of the Manhattan's grocery stores from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Every church and organization in the area are encouraged to collect food for the hungry people. Now therefore, I, Usha Reddy, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim "Super Bowl Sunday shall also be celebrated as Super Bowl Sunday in the City of Manhattan, and encourage all citizens of Manhattan to join and support and provide soup at your area grocery stores."
Thank you, Brenda. And here you go. Thank you so much. And would you like to say a few words?
I would.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Honored Commissioner, my friends. In 1996, we were championed in Manhattan by Jack Parr, a famous basketball player from K-State who took up residence in Salina to start this thing called "Super Bowl Sunday." It was at a hunger dinner held at K-State. It was sponsored by the Crisis Center of Manhattan. I was sitting in the crowd. I was one of those that got to eat red beans and rice while the guy next to me had a steak. Okay? From my doings as county attorney, I was able to picture three posts. One of them was the hype for the Super Bowl game. One of them was the collection places that we have in our town. And one of them was the wonderful distribution center that we have now run by Mary Beth Kiefer. Suffice it to say, Jack and I talked about it, and the first year, we collected more food than Salina did, and the next year, we collected way more food than Salina did. Somewhere along the time, we lost the hype of the game, the Super Bowl became an ordinary thing. Well, this year, we have new hype.
Yes.
We have a Kansas City team, and I'm really looking forward to big things. My goal has always been one can of food for everybody in Riley County. That would be wonderful.
It's doable. It's very doable.
Thank you very much for hearing our commission, for hearing our petition.
Yes, thank you so much. There you go. Mary Beth, would you like to say a few words as well?
He said a great.
Well, thank you so much. We have wonderful community volunteers, and we have a lot of community need. And it's people like you that keep us going and keep more people coming to Manhattan, Kansas, as well as our Kansas State University and USD 383. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
And as a former elected official, I know the sacrifice that you folks put out, and I thank you. It is wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we'll go on to Commissioner comments. Any comments from commissioners this evening?
I'd just like to make a note that several commissioners attended the chambers, I call it chambers because the Manhattan, Junction City, and Waumego Chambers of Commerce hosted a retreat in Olathe over the weekend. It was on Friday and Saturday. And I think, as usual, there's always, when you come away, you get all these ideas at a workshop, and you really start thinking about things. So it really was significant to start thinking about all those topics. The Chamber, of course. We have given the Chamber money. They're gonna be working hard to generate both talent and attract new businesses to our community. And it's not just ours, but it's Junction City and Waumigo as well. Just to say that that regional level of cooperation is essential if we're going to succeed at improving and growing our community, attracting more students to K-State, trying to make up for the troop movement at Fort Riley, and the Kansas agriculture, too. So it's just important that we work with one another.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I was just gonna mention, it was a really good retreat, and I'm glad I wasn't gonna go on Thursday, but I heard the winter weather we were gonna have on Friday, and I ended up going Thursday night. And I think that's, all of the speakers on Friday and the discussion we had was very eye-opening, but also, there's a sense of crisis, let's say, for the outmigration of Kansas. And so we have jobs, we have talent, now we need to keep them here. And that's one of our cores, not only for all the chambers, but us as city commissioners and universities, to make sure that we keep our talent in Kansas and provide the jobs that are necessary. I do want to congratulate Ron. You know, it was wonderful to see the Mercury recognize you and all the accomplishments you've done, and just the, not only your professionalism, as they mentioned, but just the transition. You have so many bosses, and you never know who you're gonna get the next year or the year after that, but you deal with all of us really well, so very proud of you. Thank you. The MLK activities that happened over the weekend, again, we still have a lot of work to do as far as race discrimination in our housing, schools, and transportation, you name it, we have a lot of work to do. Next week, Kansas State University has all of their activities planned. Students are back this week, so I urge you, or encourage you, to attend some of their activities next week as well. Tonight, we're gonna be having the department heads present. The next few days, I think next week, next Tuesday, we have a work session on our timeline for projects, with the sales tax not passed, then we're gonna have those discussions. And then on the 31st, we have our goal setting. So if you are interested in where the city's gonna be going as far as our budget and our project and the discussions that are happening, I encourage you to tune in and to listen to all of those meetings. Our goal setting will be at the Flint Hills Discovery Center, so that won't have a TV feed to it. But definitely, our projects piece will next week, so stay tuned. So with that, any other comments?
You know, it's really important that we mention that David and Sonia Baker were selected by the Martin Luther King Planning Committee for this year's Spirit of Martin Luther King Community Service Award. And those are significant recognition of people in the community that have worked hard to bring people together. And so I just wanna congratulate them. It's probably been too long waiting, and I'm glad that David and Sonia are being recognized. So it just occurred to me, I had not, yeah.
Yes, thank you for reminding me about that. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments about the consent agenda items? I will say, we did appoint Commissioner Aaron Esterbrook to the Joint Maintenance Facility Committee to select a construction manager at risk for design for the project. Originally, Mike Dodson was on that committee, and since he is no longer on the city commission, we put Aaron Esterbrook on that one. And we have Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Morris on Item E for the Northwest Water Transmission Main Project for the selection committee, and they will be representing the city commission on that one. Any comments from, and any of the items?
Yeah, I wanna comment on Item G. We're once again being asked to give away $11,077 from the water fund to waive a, you know, water hookup fee for Potawatomi County, and I guess EMS building, Blue Township. And, you know, the justification in the memo says, well, we gave away $59,000 a couple of months ago. And of course, my point is, we need to stop giving away money from the water fund. We got $60 million worth of CIP projects on backlog, and why do we keep waiving hookup fees? If there's a cost for hooking up the water, we need to charge it, and that needs to go into the enterprise fund so that it can be reinvested into this backlog of CIP projects. So I don't intend to vote for that, and I won't vote for any other waivers in the future.
Other questions?
I think I'm going to support it because I want that relationship with Potawatomi County to grow and improve. Peter? And, but I also think we need to, perhaps, maybe this is what Usha would say, maybe we need to develop a policy.
Yes, Usha would say that.
Usha would say that. And so, because I think, it seems to me the requests are coming faster than the occasional that we've seen in the past. So just having said that, I plan to support approving the hook-on fees for Blue Township's Emergency Management Services Station and Sheriff Substation on Green Valley Road. It's $11,000.
Yeah, and I'm glad Linda and Lynn brought that up. I will be supporting it this evening, but I've mentioned it in the past, and if we can look into some kind of policy that other communities might have, you know, we did this for the stabilization center, I believe, and for USD 383, and then for the housing that took place, and I think it's that Lee Mill area that we bought. I think each time, if you add all of those up, that increases it quite a bit. So let's look at something we can do where people don't feel like this is something, well, the city will waive it, let's ask for it. Let's have some kind of policy or some kind of form that we can look at, what makes somebody eligible for us to waive fees and what might not. Because ultimately, it's not free. Our taxpayers are picking up that tab, so we wanna make sure that we're not putting it all onto just our taxpayers. But I think that's something, like tonight, I would be okay with it because we have a good partnership with them, and we want that area to develop, and it makes good sense. But again, it would be good to have some kind of policy in place so we don't have to go through this discussion every single time we have one.
Yeah, see, I think the policy should be, we never give waivers. It's pretty simple, because last legislative session, we used $7,000 from the fund to pay for Kansas League of Cities membership dues. So what's happening is, when citizens complain their water bill keeps going up, it's not because of the cost of services, it's because we keep diverting the money. And we all talk a good show about we're gonna be physically responsible and worry about the budget and reduce water rates, but it's all talk. When it comes down to the vote, we give away the money. $7,000 last session, and we talked Lee Mill addition, it was $59,000. So it's not a small amount of money. It makes a big difference on the utility fee, and I'm sure in a couple of months, the Water Department will be up here saying, we gotta raise those water rates 3% across the board for sewer, water, and everything, because we got all these projects. And the commission's gonna say, wow, we gotta support that, forgetting that they gave away thousands of dollars in previous waivers. You know, all for good causes. Everybody's got a good cause, but if you're building a house, come before the commission and see if it gets waived.
With that, are there any comments?
I would just say that I wasn't happy about the waiving all the connection fees for the lots that we sold. I wanted that, us to be able to offset some of the delinquent taxes that that owner had. And so I'm not gonna be supporting that in the future, I don't think, and certainly not at the level we saw with so many lots. So I wanna be sure that we include those, that example or that situation in the policy that we make. When you get a cheap lot, you can pay the utility fees, you know. Anyway, so thanks.
Any public comment on consent agenda this evening? And is there anything related to flooding, as Linda would ask? All right. With that, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it was distributed.
I'll second it.
And Brenda?
Mayor Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, except no on Item G.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook?
Yes, except no on Item G.
Motion carries for the consent agenda five to zero with the exception of Item G, which carried three to two.
Okay. We'll move on to our departmental, department head discussion, 2020 overview from city administration and department heads, and you will see Dennis Marstall right now, our Assistant City Manager. Tammy Galvin will come up. Bernie, I'll tell them as they come up, I guess. Go ahead, Dennis. It's all yours.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Reddy, Mayor Pro Tem Butler, and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to share some of perspective from the city manager's office and the department heads with some of our viewpoints as you think about 2020 and our upcoming goal-setting session. Recently, many of you attended the Chamber of Commerce Regional Leaders Retreat, and you heard some concepts talking about what the Department of Commerce is doing with economic development and how the state is having to focus on that. You heard some information about talent attraction and workforce development, and how we wanna further invest in that in our community. And you also heard a presentation about placemaking and what type of city do we want to create for the future workforce, for our local community in the region. And so tonight, we want to take a little bit of opportunity to hear from the department heads about what we think is a concise format for you so that we can talk about some information as you think about priorities for 2020. So I'll kick it off as the department head role I play in the city manager's office. And to give you an overview, we've kinda structured all of our presentations, but I'm also gonna talk about, so we have two slides each, but I'm also gonna talk about a pretty exciting initiative that we're leading in the city manager's office with department heads and the entire workforce about organizational excellence initiative, which I'll get into here in a second. But really, just to give you an overview, 2019, we're gonna ask all department heads to give you an overview. As you know, our past year's been marked by our flood preparation, a lot of the communication and community engagement we did with the neighborhoods most likely to be impacted by the flood. You'll see a lot of the issues that we've addressed over the past year were based around your priorities to continue the conversation around rental housing. We did the massage therapy ordinance, smoking and vaping, consolidating those policies. We even did the exploration about speed cameras. We did the large vehicle ordinance, and of course, we have the e-scooters, which is still moving forward into 2020. Some of the projects that we've been working on the past year, led by some of the city manager's office and all the departments, the Aggieville TIF district, but the redevelopment overall, the North Campus Corridor. We did the community survey for our citizens to get their feedback, again, talking about the economic development, how we're gonna do some of our priority for funding and projects. The conference center expansion was one of the accomplishments to get that going. We talked about the .3 sales tax and the projects that were involved in that. We created the mall CID, did the community house RFP, and then we did some of the action with Lee Mill Village. We welcomed some new faces and new roles in the city manager's office. We have Brenda Wolf now as our new city clerk, so we've had some transition, and different staff members have come into the city clerk's office. And then overall, we've processed over 400 agenda items for your consideration in the past year. As we think about 2020, what's on the horizon, clearly, we will continue to work on your commission packet, and the agenda item drives our work. We wanna, of course, increase our communication with both the workforce, the community, and with you, and we're looking at the 2021 budget process, thinking ahead when we bring that budget to you here, starting with our conversations March through summer. And part of the role, of course, is the city manager's office is a day-to-day city operation, so working with the talented staff that we have at the department heads and throughout the organization. Looking at what we wanna make sure you hear from us, some of the things that we see are the key initiatives on the horizon, what I called about the organizational excellence initiative. I'll talk more in detail, but it's really based on six areas of what we think is a good workplace, and really working towards this concept of how can the city of Manhattan be an employer of choice? And so we'll talk a bit more about that. But also, one of the big things on the horizon, which we'll talk about at your retreat and future conversations, is about the debt structure going forward and how we're gonna fund city operations and the approach that we wanna take, really looking out at the three to five-year range. We'll have the conversation about the ED renewal, on how you wanna proceed with that, talk about the impact of sales tax questions going forward, and of course, making the mill levy decisions in the budget process. But also talking about what does our revenue picture look like going forward, and what does that even mean for cost recovery and fees for some of our services and programs going forward? As we think about some things coming up in 2020, we will be bringing to you a purchasing policy, some changes. It's a pretty comprehensive policy. It really involves four different policies, and so we'll be bringing that to you for consideration. We will be talking about additional resources, and particularly talking about staffing, about potentially in our communications area, and then even looking at some of the issues we found with some of the AV upgrades here in the city commission chambers. Talking about the organizational excellence initiative, this came out from some of our surveys that we now have done twice. First in 2017, and then again this past summer, we surveyed our employees in the city workforce and got about 300 respondents. And so we have some, a lot of good news. We put out the whole survey results in your packet, so if you wanna digest that individually, you can do that. But some things I wanna highlight is one, one we don't have up there, is that basically, employees were given four choices. Are you very satisfied, satisfied, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied? So one of the key things we wanna put there, I wanna paint the picture, is that in 2019, 31% of the employees said that they were very satisfied being a City of Manhattan employee. 59% said they were satisfied. If we compare that to 2017, 30% said they were very satisfied, so we had a point gained, but 64% said that they were satisfied, dropped down to 59. The different data points that we kinda pulled out from the employee survey really kinda mark where we see some headwinds with our employee and our workforce, that we think is important to bring to your attention, but more importantly, for city management, to see how we can create this work environment. We talked about talent attraction. Really, the sense of, do our employees feel like they belong to an organization? As you know, and as you'll hear from us, a lot of our work is very project-specific. We're working on big projects for our community, and so a lot of our employees have their head down, focused on their work. We're trying to see what we can do to make sure that they can lift their heads up and feel like they're part of a bigger organization, not just within the work group, within the department, but within the entire workforce. But then we get down to some really specific ones about how they feel about being recognized as high-performing employees. And really, 48% don't feel that way, and even further to play that out is they really are not seeing a connection between compensation and performance. And so that is causing us to look internally about how are we gonna address some of these going forward? And then you even see, we can break down this employee survey information by location, city hall, other satellite offices, but even among genders. And then we can also break it down in comparison from the '27 data that we have to the 2019 data that we have. But really, then getting into, as we talk about the work-life balance, when we have unique operations as a government workforce, a lot of our services are weekends, holidays, 24-hour services, there is this interest in work-life balance. And seeing that we have some growing dissatisfaction among that among our workforce makes us wanna think about how we can better approach that balance. And then even employee turnover, HR and R can talk about that, but about 11.5% turnover. So thinking about that, again, we said we wanna focus on what can be our overarching goal, and that is to be an employer of choice. What does that mean? We found these kinda traits that represent organizations that are creative and robust, they have a recruitment process, fair, consistent, responsible business practices. We think the hallmarks that we're espousing, but we need to make sure that we're focusing more on these and maybe not losing sight. But really, as we say there at the bottom, employer choice, both as an organization and the community, will benefit. So invest in our employees, we think will help us continue to deliver the top-notch services and programs that the citizens and you have come to expect from the city workforce. So our vision is overall is that we wanna be a people-oriented organization and a great place simply to work. When we think about the competitive market, not just here in the Manhattan market and the region, but Kansas City where a lot of draw goes for the K-State grads, and even where the Fort Riley separation folks go, they wanna stay in the community or they wanna go elsewhere. But also, we wanna make sure we show we care about the people and the people care about the organization. It's a two-way street. So we really have to focus on the six areas. The pay, where we wanna offer competitive pay. We wanna have performance evaluations so that we can reward folks and also train them how to do their evaluations. We wanna make sure we have benefits. You'll see one of the high marks we get is the benefits, talking about clearly health insurance. Employees are appreciative of that benefit. But what can we do looking at the other benefits being offered within the industry and across the country? Thinking about work hours, how we define our expectations going forward to be flexible and make sure we have the safe work structures for our employees. Again, thinking about some of the things on the horizon with the new city joint maintenance facility, how can we make sure we have that structure in place? And then think about our workplace environment, that we wanna champion a people-first culture again. And then lastly, the budget. That is your policy document, it's a guiding vision for many folks as they interpret where our priorities are. We wanna make sure that we have the communication with departments so they know what the priorities are going forward. So that's kinda the overview of the city manager's office. We'll go through the department heads now, and I'll ask Tammy Galvin from the Human Resources to come up and do her two slides, and we'll work through the rest of the presentation.
Dennis?
Yeah.
One question for you before we have Tammy come up. You know, we talked about the workforce that we just did the evaluation on. One of the things I'd like to see at some point is also, we did the McGrath wage comparison sometime. I don't wanna see that, but what I do wanna see is not where we, what we need to do as far as our scale, but kinda have a comparative idea of what other employees get paid at their respective positions in other communities in the state of Kansas and in the surrounding area, maybe about five or six places. Because I don't know what good looks like in those staffing areas and what does a flexible schedule look like. So if you can, you know, I don't know, present it as a document in our mail folder or something, just so we have some kind of a comparative idea on what to do about some of those areas.
We've got some of that underway already, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Next, you said Tammy, so, welcome.
Good evening, mayors and commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to come up and visit with you about some organizational outcomes that Human Resources is working with the city to try to work on some of those things Dennis just reviewed with OEI. So just real quickly, in 2019, our department did an internal I-9 audit, which is a pretty important thing for a Human Resources department to do so that you can check to see if you're in compliance with the one document that's required by federal law in order to have an employee legally working for you. And so we were able to identify some things that we could do better as we're in processing employees, and also set up a new semi-annual audit procedure to make sure that we're actually implementing the things that we're training. I was also, in my first year, able to do a comprehensive departmental evaluation, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the 2020 operations overview, but able to work through the evaluation and reorganization and incorporate a couple new positions into the department for 2020 budget. One of the things that I, my department was able to do- One of the things that I, my department was able to do was assist with the facilitation of diversity and inclusion work, work focus groups. So we spent a lot of last summer sitting down and talking to employees about some of the results that Dennis just shared with you, that employees had some levels of satisfaction and dissatisfaction among the organization, but working through some of those conversations related to equal employment opportunity and the city's non-discrimination ordinance so that we could get some data on our workplace environment and kind of figure out what our, what our bar is and see where we have some areas that we can improve. So we were able to do that listening session, and doing that, before we did the work focus groups, the city did a diversity survey, and so we were talking to employees about what things that they think that can make the work environment more positive. Some of the things you'll see up here are supervisory training focusing on the dynamics of working with people. Oftentimes, we're promoting people because they're superior technical knowledge and they're really good at the technical parts of their job. What we're maybe failing to do is train them on how to work with people and also do performance evaluations and work through those conflict resolution things, how to deal with disciplinary issues or coach their employees to get them to, to do the things that we need them to do for the organization to be successful. Some of the other things we heard on that survey were that employees would like to see flexible work schedules, maybe not that they don't want to put in all the time, but some people have daycare concerns and, both male and female, and could they work nine to six instead of eight to five, or can we create a core set of hours and then allow people to come in either early or later based on operational concerns? More training, more communication, and planning for management. They'd like to see some sort of strategic direction for the city. Another comment was supervisory training is critical regarding evaluations, disciplinary policies, supervisor-employee relations, and communication. One of the areas that I felt like I should point out was that thirty-three percent of respondents to that survey would like the organization to listen more to the concerns of the employees to create a more inclusive work environment. So one of the, one of the things that we did that we heard a lot from that diversity and inclusion workforce groups was that people need more time to have that work-life balance. And one of the things we heard, we hear a lot, and one of the things that administration was able to help us work through was some of the challenges with the, with the way we accrue leave for the city. If we have newer, newer employees who need to go on maternity leave or paternity leave or they're adopting a child and they're welcoming someone new into their home, they don't have a lot of leave to do that with. And so one of the things we did is take a look around the state and other municipalities, and we were able to answer our diversity and inclusion committee and recommend a parental leave policy that we were able to implement in 2019, get that developed and implement. And we've had a lot of really favorable responses from employees for doing that, to listening to their concerns and then being able to implement some change that's going to help them out to create that balance. Specific to my department, I worked on training employees and creating professional development opportunities for my team. So in 2019, we had training on an employment law conference, Family Medical Leave Act, Americans with Disabilities Act, EEOC, risk management, diversity and inclusion, and workers' compensation. Because all of the areas that affect human resources are primarily driven by regulatory agencies, and anytime those things change, we have to respond to that, so we have to stay up to date. So those are the ways I'm helping my team stay up to date. For 2020, we did in 2019 get budget approval to add human resource management software and also to, to add additional team members into the human resources department for two full-time employees. We are currently evaluating human resource management software that will bring the whole organization into one place. Right now, we have eight or nine different softwares that we're using to keep track of all of our employee data, and we're either entering that information two, three, sometimes four times to get it in every place we need it to be. So that's going to really create a lot of efficiency for the human resources department, but it's also going to allow the organization to be more responsive because everything's going to be in a one-stop shop so supervisors can look online immediately in their employee record and be able to tell, have I had any disciplinary issues with this person before? What's our last coaching notes? What do we need to do to get ready for their performance evaluation? Where are they stacking up next to their team? And some of the things that it, it's also going to be, allow us to do is project turnover. So one of the things that we know, based on some data analytics that we did internally, is that within the next ten years, seventeen percent of our workforce is eligible to retire. We also know that right now, seventy-five percent of our workforce has been in their position five years or less. That doesn't mean that seventy-five percent of our workforce is brand-new because I'm one of those employees counted in that seventy-five percent, even though I've been with the organization for almost nine years. But seventy-five percent of our organization is new to their position within the last five years. So we really have to make sure that we're staying on top of succession planning and transferring that knowledge and creating those career development paths for employees, and I might be getting ahead of myself. So the two things that, three things actually, that HR is going to be doing to focus operationally for 2020 are recruiting, recruiting and onboarding those two additional human resources team members, which we have one on board, and we're hiring the second one, and then also providing organizational training and development. So focusing on the supervisory and performance evaluation areas that we heard back from employees on employee surveys so that we can help our supervisors be successful in what we're asking them to do. And then 2020 and 2021 key initiatives that are on the horizon. A lot of other comments that we hear in our employee surveys is that our policies are difficult to understand or they could be contradictory. And so one of the things that we're going to be looking to do here next year and potentially into 2021, depending on the amount of time that we're able to spend on it, is review and update our personnel policy manual. Currently, it's about eight hundred pages to, as a guiding document for how we expect employees to act and behave as an employee, and so we really need to trim that back. Probably, we're hoping to about a hundred and fifty pages or less so that it's more digestible and people might actually be able to remember that. Again, working on that HRM system. And then we're also going to be working to support the organization with our OEI initiatives. We, to go back to a couple of the statistics that Dennis had up, I think potentially, but fifty-nine percent of our employees would like to see improvements on how the organization deals with low-performing employees. About twelve percent of our employees would not feel comfortable voicing a concern or making suggestions related to workplace health and safety. And so how can we create that bystander or that open-door policy so that people feel like they can come forward and talk about things? And so we're working to create that communication across the organization through these workforce groups and also some communication and practice efforts that the city manager's office does. One of the statistics that we are definitely working to improve by increasing supervisor training is that we have about fifteen percent of our employees that don't feel like their supervisors equipped to help prevent or resolve problems in the workplace. So how can we help with that? We're going to be increasing that training, and we're working on that training schedule right now for 2020, so looking forward to getting that implemented. The good news is we do have about ninety percent of our employees that are satisfied or very satisfied with their job that they do. But, not but, sorry. So then going into area-specific to pay, we, we did some analytics on turnover, and what we found is that areas of like our street department, which hires our maintenance technicians to work on street maintenance and do street repairs, and our parks department that has people that maintain all of our parks and do all the mowing, those are some of our lowest-paid positions in both of those departments. And not surprisingly, those are our areas of our highest turnover. So we have about a thirty-one percent turnover in, in our parks department. Those wages start out at fourteen sixty-two an hour, and although we have really great benefits, what, what puts food on everybody's table is that paycheck they take home. And when we're competing against contractors and the construction that's going on, on the north campus corridor to create MBAP and other buildings, we're not able to keep up with what the market's giving those people right now, so we're constantly hiring in those positions. Street, street maintenance as well, those, those positions start at sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents an hour, same situation, twenty-five percent turnover. Those are some of our highest turnover areas in the city because we're not able to keep up with the market and even our own local competitors. In recruiting and retention, some of our unfilled positions that we're struggling to fill, we're a street supervisor, safety specialist has been advertised for a while, a planner for community development. We have difficulty hiring assistant city attorneys, and we have difficulty hiring and retaining staff accountants for our finance department. There's, there could be numerous reasons, but one of the things that those departments point to is that the market for those positions pays higher than what the city's starting them at. And so one of the things that we feel as an organization is important is that we, answering your earlier request, Yusha, is that we look at a pay study to figure out how we're lagging behind the market because our past pay studies have said we want to be competitive with the market, but what we're figuring out is that we're not staying competitive because our salary ordinance only moves by whatever the COLA is every year, and so we're not doing a market analysis. Most organizations do a full compensation study every five to seven years, and I don't even know the date on our last full compensation study. We've done small studies here and there to target positions that we feel like we're suffering with, like, you know, if you take the list that I just gave for safety planner, assistant city attorney, and accountant, we've done those types of things in the past, but we haven't checked our entire organization against the market in quite some time. One of the other concerns that came up on some of our diversity and inclusion and also employee satisfaction surveys was that there could potentially be a pay equity issue, and so we want to look into that further, and we'll, we're working on some data analysis that we can provide forward at a later time on that. But really, what we've heard, you know, is that the, the employees want some sort of strategic direction for the city. They want to have established organizational priorities that are attainable, that we can actually get to. And the ways that the commission can help us support getting those things and improving our employee satisfaction and becoming that regional boy, regional employer of choice is by helping us provide the time and the money to help invest in our employees and make sure that they know that this is a place that cares about them and it's a place that they care about as well. And with that, I would stand for any questions you might have.
Questions for Tammy? Go ahead, Aaron.
I just have one, that the performance evaluation system, is that mandated by state law? Are there any state regulations that force you to do it?
There are not state regulations that force you to do performance evaluations.
Okay. Thanks.
So I, this is mostly a comment, is that okay? I want to thank you for recognizing, for the diversity study and recognizing also the flexibility for things like childcare, those are important. And as somebody that is experiencing that myself, coming onto the commission, I think those are needs in our community that really have to be discussed more and vetted in finding ways to make this, our work environment more hospitable to attracting those, that, that group of people into our city staff. So really glad to hear that. One thing that I noticed when I came into, when I was, when I was beginning my term on the Board of Education was I was like, wow, I'm like the only guy in the room. There's a lot of, there's a lot of women in education. And that, and then tonight, as I look around the room, it's, there's a lot of men in this room and there's not a lot of women. And I think as things change, as you mentioned, the, the workforce changes over, the, there's different ends that are coming, there's people leaving, there's new people coming in. We have to work and Ron has to work because we don't have employees, we only have Ron as our employee as a commissioner, but to make sure we have policies that reflect more of those inclusive policies, I guess. And we, we explored that in education as well, trying to attract and retain young, young men to be in classrooms. Young, young boys like to see young men teaching, just the same way I think women would like to see more women, women in their work environment too in the city. So I thank you for, for that, and I just wanted to add that in there because it was pretty stark looking around the room and trying to find some other ladies, so thank you.
Sure. We actually, demographically, we're about seventy-five percent male and twenty-five percent female. And we have implemented strategies to kind of eliminate some unconscious bias in the hiring process by creating screening matrices that, you know, call out specific qualifications so we're not necessarily focused on whose application we're looking at, but we're looking for those qualifications that they have that we can quantify and using quantifiable measures to screen applicants so that we're getting people who are qualified as opposed to any other unconscious bias that might enter that process. So between that and then adding some diversity into our recruiting process and showing that diversity as we're introducing ourselves to applicants, I'm hoping that we can increase that. Thank you.
Tammy, I think, is this the first year we've done a climate survey for our organization? Or have we done a climate survey in the past? Two, seventeen?
Yes.
Okay, maybe you mentioned that earlier. So I'm glad we're doing this. It's often good to understand, recognize the problem and then work our way to fixing it instead of thinking, that's the way we've always done it, too bad you don't like it, we're as good as we can get. So I'm glad we're looking back at it and keeping up because one of the things when we try to recruit and keep talent is the changes you're talking about, flexible scheduling, pay, compensation. Because what I hear even in RCPD is we, and fire, our firefighters, we train them and then they leave for more pay, whether it's in Kansas City or in another state. So that's something we do need to look at a little bit closer on how to compensate or what does flexible scheduling look like? If somebody can work on their computer on agendas and things remotely at home, maybe that's something we can do. Because one of the reasons we don't have a lot of females in our, in most of our workforces is if they, especially if they have young children, it's usually the woman or the mom that ends up staying at home to take care of the child because it's so much for daycare. So there's a variety of reasons, but I'm glad we have recognized problems and working towards solutions. And I think as a commission, we will move forward on some of those things, and I'm glad you gave, at least getting a couple of more folks to work in human resources. Human resources department is one of the key departments for not only retaining and recruiting staff, but to keep the city going because you need well-qualified, trained supervisors and department heads to make sure the job is getting done and we don't have lawsuits or anything of that sort, but that people are doing their job satisfied and being satisfied with their life here too. So it's quite a task. Thank you.
I think that in the past, at least Yusha and I have made the case to the city manager and some of the staff too, about the need for greater diversity. And, and what we see is, are the people in this room. And sometimes we're the only two women here, Katie, when you're here. And so it takes vacancy, it takes a vacancy before we can remedy some of that. So I'm glad to see that you're putting some measures in place to help bring some change and so it's not lost on us. Thank you.
And race, so.
And race.
But thank you once again. We do need to recognize that and find solutions towards it. So I appreciate all the work you've done. Next is Bernie.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Tammy. Director of Finance.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. I'll be, I'll be brief. My first bullet point, our assistant director left in January of last year. Human Resource did a wonderful job on advertising. It was a wonderful advertisement. It went nationwide. We didn't have any finance person from Kansas. We didn't have any finance person from Kansas cities that applied. Had a couple from counties, one from the state and one from a city in Oklahoma. I think that the result of that, at least with my staff, nobody felt terribly excited. And it dawned on me at that time that it would be just wrong for me to go ahead and make a choice and then know that I'm at some point, I was going to be leaving the city, hopefully not horizontally, but vertically. And it just seemed like a good time to announce that I would be leaving at some point. The date of my departure, obviously, is kind of odd, and I think some of you, if not all of you, know, I've taught at Kansas State part-time for over thirty years. And Capers, as Commissioner Butler knows, is so restrictive. And then June 12th, I can't remember what Tammy told me, it was either the end or beginning of a Capers quarter, and so that was the day. It is a Friday on this coming June. We have a lot of challenges in our department. You notice the second bullet, the twenty seventeen, and I know we're talking about twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, but I have to take you back to twenty seventeen. Our audit was late in getting filed. That meant we start the twenty eighteen audit late. And most importantly, I've got my city controller, Rena Neal, whom I hired seventeen, eighteen years ago, is literally the single person that deals with all of the audit preparation. It's not right. It hasn't been right for years. Prior to Rena, we had Libby Peterson, who did the same thing. And the difficulty is that, as Tammy mentioned, it's hard to hire staff accountants. We currently have two vacancies, staff accountants, along with the Assistant Finance Director, and it has posed a problem. As a result, not only is having taken over some of the responsibilities that Hillary had when she left, but most importantly, maintaining a close relationship with our rating agencies. Literally, I talk to them probably every other week about some issue, oftentimes dealing with audits. We have all three rating agencies that rate our bonds and temporary notes. We have a high rating. We established that eighteen, seventeen years ago, and we've maintained that. Double A two with Moody's, double A, double A with Standard and Poor, and a double A plus with Fitch Ratings. Those are very important, and they are very important to me, and they should be important to all of you as commissioners, because a downgrade invariably will affect interest rates in the future, along with other outstanding debt issues. As a result, I talked to city management and the city manager about developing a disclosure agent. Initially, I did that and found that it was just way beyond my ability to keep that up to date with all of the debt instruments that we have and all of the debt that we have outstanding. So I suggested we move with Baker Tilly, who used to be Springstead, and they are our financial advisor. A young lady named Alyssa Glazer is our continuing disclosure agent. And Commissioners, Mayor, I would encourage you to go to the finance website, typically on the left-hand toolbar, it's in alphabetical order, the things you can find. We have put continuing disclosure and bond ratings right next to each other, continuing disclosure first. And that was intentional because I wanted to make sure that those individuals who go to our website to look for information, and I'm thinking especially of the bond rating agencies and our bond raters and the rating committees that invariably look at our bond rating, to have them see the first thing was that continuing disclosure resolution that you passed back in September and that serves as a benchmark, along with a white paper that explains the whole aspect behind continuing disclosure. And in a nutshell, it's all about transparency, that we don't hide anything, we're upfront about the position we're in. It's difficult. We will get through this, but I know in dealing with, working with management, we have some, I think, some strategies. And I'm in that awkward position of trying to make sure that the people who are making these decisions, and I'm looking especially at Jason and Dennis, that they're doing this so I can step back a little bit, let them make the decisions. I'll continue to deal with the rating agencies as long as they, they want me to. But obviously, at some point, there's going to be some difficult decisions. And I think this whole issue of hiring qualified staff accountants is at the top of that. Along with other things, we did get a new voice over internet phone system. I think it's working well. Nobody's complained to me here, at least in the last few months, so it seems to be working well. I think if you look at our operations overview for 2020, obviously, filling these staff vacancies has to be at the top, and that will be done obviously by other staff, city management, and likely not by me, and that is the way, frankly, it should be. So that we have new people, if we can get them to come in between now and the time that I leave, that those decisions are being made in anticipation of a new finance, new finance director sometime, hopefully in early summer. Our initiatives on the horizon, obviously, to fill those vacancies, I think that has to be number one. We're looking at revamping the budget process. It is apologetically, I don't want to say boring, I think budgets are terribly exciting, but we go through with work sessions, we do things that seems like almost out of road. And I think we need to get away from that, and I think almost everybody behind me and to the sides of me agree with that, I hope. We are going to look at developing an information technology strategy. I think we need that. We got through the phone system in reasonably good shape. There were some hiccups and some delays, but those were primarily from our previous carrier. And I think that we ought to be looking at the rest of this year, and especially in 2021, to make sure that our technology is where it needs to be. One of the reasons our phone system took a while was because we simply weren't geared to do voice over IP or voice over the internet. And we had to make some tremendous expenditures on our servers and on our systems to make that work. We don't, we shouldn't be in that position, and I want to try to make sure that I have a document for my predecessor to be, or my successor, I'm sorry, for my successor to go ahead and be able to run with that. We're going to continue to move ahead with our OAI that you've already heard about. I'm frankly excited. We, our department may be the first to really do something interesting. I'm working with the manager's office, and hopefully in February, give or take, we're going to start putting out monthly bulletins for our employees that kind of encapsulate what has taken place with the city budget on a month-to-month basis. And I think it's going to look neat, it's going to be a lot of information that is pertinent and not overfoaming them with numbers as we often do, you Commissioners, during our budget work session. The priorities that we have, we've got to hire the right people. My city controller, Rena Neal, who most of you know, simply cannot continue to be the one person dealing with audit issues in addition to other activities that she has. We've stripped away a number of her responsibilities and given them to other staff, but that was almost a Band-Aid approach. She simply needs help, and we need to find that qualified help as quickly as we can. Happy to stand for any questions, Commissioners. Yes?
HR talked about half a dozen or eight different kind of software programs. Finance is in a similar position, isn't it? Will you guys tell us a little bit about that?
Well, we have a system called Central Square. It's been through a number of name changes. It's old. There are, there are new additions that come out, but at some point, I think the city is going to have to look at investing in a new accounting software. This isn't the time with the audit issues that we're dealing with. But at some point, I think my successor will probably be bringing that to you as a commission and probably management as well, suggesting that that needs to have take place. And I think when we're staffed, that won't be as much of a challenge as it is right now with a small staff and one that we have some clear vacancies. So it works. We make it work. And I'll probably have some, or my successor will probably have some resistance to changing because they know how to make the system work and work well.
Other questions for Bernie?
Well, thank you, Commissioners.
I do have one right here.
Yes.
So I was thinking, you said you were going to send a month-to-month, some kind of a budget update to your staff? Is that what you said?
On the OAI?
Yeah.
It'll be for city employees.
Okay.
Because that's really, I think, the emphasis behind this initiative to begin with. And we want to make sure that employees really understand what the city budget does on a month-to-month basis. So as I develop this, along with the manager's office, the city manager will give the final go-ahead whether we're going to use this as a, as a tool, month-to-month. But it's intended to be one page, front and back, glitzy, easy to read, and to make the point about where the budget is at any given month.
Can we see that also, or is that a trial thing for staff?
I don't think we'll let you Commissioners see it. I, no, of course, of course we don't.
Put it in the mail folder so we have it too.
Of course.
Okay, okay, that, and that was my question. We're going to, Mr., certainly you have, you've been doing a lot, and you'll be here for at least another six months or so. And with Hillary also leaving for Washington, and you have a wonderful team working with you, and hopefully we find good people because this is quite a challenging process and very complex and very detailed, and every single number counts. Is this what we're seeing as far as our surrounding areas for hiring accountants? We heard accountants and attorneys.
Well, I think it might be. I talked to the lead auditors, Burbidge Strahan, who is doing our audit, and they said that they have difficulty hiring CPAs, qualified accounting staff, as well. And they're paying ten to fifteen thousand more than what we currently pay.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up, Katie Jackson, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So to begin, I'd like to say that while the city manager's office gave us two slides, like a good, like lawyers are trained to do, we found a workaround. And I actually have twenty-three slides because all the things that are on the other, on the other slides, all the achievements that the staff have done, or many of them, this legal department has some role in. Sometimes it's a small role and sometimes it's a bigger role. So we're pleased to support the city in this way. We support the daily operational needs of the city. We support the city commission, what they'd like to do, respond to the public, and then, of course, assist city staff. So that's why our number one accomplishment is that we maintained a high volume of daily operations. We like data in the legal department, and we track what we do. We, in 2019, we performed more than 1,100 legal deliverables. That's not all the work we do. Those are just the things that we do, that we actually create a document or review a document and do meaningful change to. So that's a very high volume for a staff of three attorneys and one legal analyst. And I'd like to note, in our office, other than me, the other staff in the city attorney's office, they were all hired in 2017 or later. So all new employees to the city of Manhattan. The legal department also includes the municipal court, and I'd like to note the high volume that they process. They are a long, a lot of long-term employees who work really hard. Last year, they processed more than 10,000 parking tickets and more than 5,000 other cases. I'd like to note for the parking operation that one thing we transitioned to in the last two years that you probably recall is we did transition to e-ticketing prior to just the last couple of years. Our parking control officer handwrote every ticket. We do have an e-ticketing system now, and we also added a part-time parking control officer last year when some of the ordinances changed with respect to Aggieville so that we had more turnover in those districts. So we have had some change in there, and we're going to continue to look at the parking control operations and enforcement over the next several years as things change. The, one of our goals as a legal department is to practice preventive law, and that is training staff and trying to train the city commission and update internal policies and procedures that we know to be outdated or problematic. It's really meaningful to us when Tammy from the Director of HR says that more than, about seventy-five percent of the employees have been in their position five years or less. That's meaningful to the legal department because that means they may not be acquainted with the process that applies to their job. They might be, they may, they may have that, but they may not be. And so we see more issues arise, legal issues and other avoidable legal problems that arise because the training simply wasn't there or the information wasn't there, or we're working, we're so busy working on other things, we don't have an opportunity to stop and examine our systems, find those issues, and then train staff. So that's something that we believe we should do more of in the legal department. We do collaborate on community initiatives. I want to credit the municipal court again. This year, last year, when they participated in the community program, which individuals could come and address outstanding old warrants, or they could also have their crimes, excuse me, their past offenses, they could ask for them to be removed from their records. So they did participate in that. Our prosecutors also work with the RCPD and the K-State PD, and they train them on ordinances and prosecution issues processing through our court. So we have a good community relationship with our partners, and we also, in the last year, improved our efficiency with technology. I mentioned the e-ticketing, but we also have internal, we started internal project management software in the city attorney's office that has allowed us to be, keep track of the high demand a little more accurately. Our operational overview, really, is just to continue to do, do the things that we do, and then all the exciting things that the city commission wants to tackle and that city staff wants to tackle. Those are the things that we'll look forward to doing in 2020. Again, we really want to focus on updating outdated policies and procedures and increasing our training. That takes time, that is really hard to find when you're on a, focused on project deadlines, but we'd like to make room for that. And then the court, the municipal court, we're doing some transition of court administration and parking functions on the court admin side. We have two wonderful, long-term court services officers who, one who's been with the city of Manhattan for more than forty years, Lori Camel, another one who's been here more than fifteen, David McGillis. When they leave, they're both, they've both announced that they will be transitioning in the next five years, and we're preparing a plan of succession to, for their roles and to absorb their high caseloads. And we'd like to continue our ongoing process of scanning records that are in the old jail, which most of you have seen, all those boxes. State law requires us to keep our court records forever. So we, we, over the years, we try to tackle several years of records at a time, scan them. We can digitize them, that's acceptable, and trying to get them out of the old jail. I don't have a whole lot to add. Our twenty to, 2020 to 21 key initiatives are kind of the things I've covered, but I do want to highlight some of our department priorities and requests. I'd like to credit the city manager's office and the HR department for their, the OAI initiative. Again, with legal, we kind of see the strain of the organization. We see where employees are unhappy or they have had legal issues or they're raising issues. We see the need for these programs, and we're really excited to see that the manager's office and HR and other city departments are dedicating time and attention to making, to addressing the workplace issues that have come to our attention over the last few years. Couple other comments. We do struggle to hire assistant city attorneys. We have a hire in the budget for halfway through this year. We hired last year, so we have two assistant city attorneys in the city attorney's office and me. When we did that, I reached out to the law schools, Washburn Law, KU Law. I had zero interest from any graduating students. That's pretty shocking. No interest in coming to the city of Manhattan for one of our positions. Attorneys are not, when we look at attorney jobs, we're not competing with the other jobs in the city or other jobs like it. We're competing with other attorney jobs. So we have to offer attorney positions that are commensurate with those other positions. The city of Manhattan's attorney pay is lower than Riley County Attorney's Office, Kansas State University, and the county councilor's office. So those are our main local competitors. We have supplemented and been able to attract two really high-quality assistant city attorneys nonetheless because we offer them the kinds of benefits that Tammy's talked about. We have a little more flexibility, we've adjusted work schedules a little bit for their family needs. We've adjusted work schedules a little bit for, for their family needs, which they were willing to accept lower pay in exchange for those to a certain extent. So that's, that's something we really work hard in the legal department on, is creating an environment, that's a positive work environment, where we're getting the job done in an efficient way for the city of Manhattan while accommodating our employees' needs. In our position, because we are a small staff, having three full-time in-house attorneys for an organization this size is small. In 2012, 2013, then the average size was five in-house attorneys for a city of our size. And then if you think about the number of employees, to have more than 400 full-time employees, more than 1,000 when you include part-time and seasonals, that's a lot for our HR department to bear. There's a lot of legal issues that can arise with a staff of that size. So we, we work hard to provide good services with our small resources. It's my belief that having highly qualified, dedicated employees does make a difference in the services that we can provide to the city. And that it's a better use of your time and the taxpayers' money if we can provide, we nurture our employees, we retain them, we grow their experience with the city of Manhattan. And then they can serve the city faster and smarter as they gain that experience. So that's a real priority for us, to develop that institutional knowledge and that experience in our assistant city attorneys. To that point, one thing that we'll be asking for on the CAO side is support for specialized staff training. They, there's a saying that good lawyers go back to school, which means you should continually be training. The law is constantly changing. Our areas of law that we practice in are incredibly varied, from the airport to the zoo, like they say, everything from A to Z. Those are all specialty areas of law. We have to understand at least enough to represent the city responsibly in those areas. So something that we're going to look for is to, to have that specialized training. We train in the state of Kansas. That's all, that's what we're doing now with the City Attorneys Association. Sometimes there's, the training we need is not offered here. And so that's something we're looking to. We have done some webinar training so that we can access resources outside the state and get that high-level training at a low cost to the city. But that is something we'd like to, we'd like to continue to develop our employees over the next several years. And then with the court, just more support for that record scanning. We know the old jail is something we need to move our records out of. Continued support for our security needs. We have, you all have seen the municipal court, you know that there is a security entrance that is staffed by the Riley County Police Department, but the equipment, there's annual costs associated with that equipment that we need continued support for. It has improved safety at the municipal court. It has improved courtroom demeanor. It has reduced the number of issues that they experienced before when it was just an open court and anyone could walk at any time with no police presence. So our staff feels it is critical and incredibly appreciated that they have that security. They'd like to maintain it. And then, as I mentioned, we're going to do our succession and organizational planning in the municipal court as, as our employees retire over the next five years. So that's a lot of information, but I will take any questions or comments you may have now.
Questions for Katie?
Sometimes we, we're anxious to get something moving and the explanation is it's stuck in legal. And I wonder how, if there's a way to work faster? Is that where you, where we suffer from only having three attorneys?
You only have three attorneys?
I would say, yeah. That's what I wondered.
That's a natural limitation on timeliness, but I have talked with the city manager's office and we're having, we're trying to prioritize, actually, that's on my, my slide and that's part of OEI. One thing that would facilitate legal response is to have established organizational priorities and so that when work comes through, that we have an understanding of where it fits within the organizational priorities. We have a system where you can request work. And last year in 2019, more than 50 different employees and officials asked us for legal work with no, with no under, they would have no understanding or, or knowledge about what our workload is or how we pace that work. So we're taking in the work and we're trying to prioritize it based on our understanding of what the organization needs and based on guidance, of course, from the city manager's office and the city commission. But that's something that would benefit the city, is that we have established, that the city at large has established organizational priorities, so we know which work to prioritize as it comes through, comes to us. Project management would, you know, would help. Sometimes where a project has proceeded for a long time and legal's not asked till the very end, and if we'd been involved earlier, it would not be, it would have been done before the very end. And we can find issues that may have been addressed early on that need to be addressed, that are only brought to our attention late in the process. So a lot of it is that's just, we're just a very busy organization. Everyone's trying to meet the needs of the community and of the commission, and they're working as quickly as responsible and possible. And we only have three attorneys to receive, understand, and respond to all of that. And we do what we can to manage it. But we are, we are continuing to work on that. And if you ever have questions about a particular thing, we can, we're happy to address any individual comments that you have like that.
I may take you up on that.
Please do. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions for Katie? Yeah, so Katie, one thing I wanted to say is, and I, I'm not as knowledgeable about all the work that legal does, but is this something that we can hire somebody remotely to do from another state or another city? Or do they have to physically be here to do the legal work that you're talking about, such as documents and such?
Well, they have to be licensed in the state of Kansas. So attorneys are licensed on a state-by-state basis. So that's, that's an issue, which someone could work remotely.
Like in Kansas City or someone?
But they have to have a state of Kansas law license. There could be some work that we could outsource, really. That depends on, that would have to be a conversation with, with city staff, how frequently they'd want to meet with that attorney, what work we could do. I think that there is an opportunity for a portion of all of the legal work to be performed remotely. That's how lawyers work. We work in the office, we meet with our client, but then we go and work on our own on our computer. That is universal in the way that legal, the legal jobs function. So there's certainly an opportunity for a portion of that. Whether someone could be wholly remote, that's something that we could talk about if they're licensed in the state of Kansas. And if we understand what their role and, and you know, how they can work into that.
Yeah, as I think about flexibility of schedule, sometimes there's also a spouse that's also probably looking for the same job. But if they're located like in Wichita or Kansas City or someplace else, you know, Lawrence, whatever it might be, if they can come in quarterly or whatever it is. I'm trying to think about how to work within the workforce that we have established, but also when the need is so high for your office. And that must be the need that's high in all attorney offices, I think even at the university and everywhere I look at. So if we can figure out that dynamic, whether it's zooming in once in a while or traveling here, you know, once in two or three months. But for those routine items, I understand for the complex ones, you would be, of course, the facilitator and all of that. But for your routine items, it might be good to think about that a little bit.
Yeah, we'll do that.
But aren't we still contracting some things out?
We are. We have, we still contract with the law firm that Bill Frost is a part of, and he works on dedicated items, a lot of development issues and a lot of the items that he helped with, that he helped with prior to his, his retirement from the city.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we're getting good quality stuff there. So that's something else. That's probably a rarity. You can't always outsource everything, but I think, I think that's working real well, real well for us to keep costs down. And so I think we should continue doing that.
Mayor, real quick. I, I just wanted to offer some breaking news to our, our media back there, that, that lawyers are human beings and they do good work in our community. I, our, our city prosecutor has been working, I think, on her own hours to educate young people in their rights. And I just, I don't know that she'd like me to highlight that, but I think that's pretty incredible because coming from a lot of people's perspective, that's the, that's the wrong, they're always the, the people with the hammer, but it's really not that way. They are human beings. They are trying to help people have and protect their rights. And I, I just want to thank you for those, offering those services too, to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Next, Jesse Romo, Airport Director. We're about halfway there.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the airport. Employments, 2019 review, employments, best year ever again. It's our third consecutive year of setting a new record for people getting on board in Manhattan Regional Airport. We had over 77,000 people fly out. And that's just on American. We've got another about 3,000 or so that flew out with, with charter aircraft. So in total, you're talking about over 80,000 people took off. You're also talking about, about 160,000 people that went out and came back through the airport. So great numbers and it just takes a team of people to, to get that level of success. And so today, we actually had a luncheon. We did an employee appreciation for everyone who works in the terminal and everyone who has a hand in the customer experience. And so it was a team MHK, which was made up of not just airport staff, but airlines, the FBO, even rental car that came over, and Banded Coffee was right there in the terminal as well. So all those people have, have a hand in the customer experience and people are, more people are flying out of MHK than ever before. So it's a great time. I mentioned Banded. They were one of the highlights of our enhanced customer experience in 2019. We had a lot of requests for coffee or food of some sort in the terminal. And they came in with a kiosk-type setup and they're in the secure area. So after you go through TSA screening, you can get your coffee or food, but they can also deliver it to the outside public side as well. So they've been a great addition to the customer enhancement at the, in the terminal. And speaking of food areas, we had some great conversations in the last few years when we were building the terminal about food service. And we had some dedicated space that we weren't able to really work out for a restaurant service. So we looked at alternative uses and we ended up negotiating with TSA to relocate from the other side of the airfield to be inside the terminal. So their offices are now inside the terminal, much more convenient for them. And I think that's, a lot of that is just helping out in the customer flow and experience too. So it's great to have TSA in, inside the terminal. We had, we do a lot with federal compliance. And two of our main drivers of that is the FAA and TSA. Annually, they come out, at least annually for TSA, but annually, the FAA will come out and judge us on a whole set of federal regulations called Part 139. We got a clean inspection this year and we're very happy about it because we were the only commercial service airport in the state of Kansas to get a clean inspection. And so that just, again, it, it takes a village because it's not just airport staff. That's FBO, that's the fire department, which are great partners with us as well, Harlan Aviation and others that are out there contributing to all the compliance issues that we have on the airside. So the FAA inspection really well, our TSA ones do really well as well. And at the end of the year, last year, we ended up starting a new campaign. It was for a 10-year celebration of service of American at, at Manhattan. And this is a great partnership with the CBB. Each month, they pull names out of a half, people who entered to win, and they've given away some great vacation packages, flight to Chicago, dinner tickets, hotel, rental car. And so the whole works, they even have some great staycation packages too. So we're going to continue to do that through June and it's celebrating 10 years over 10 months' time. We also, since we've been talking a lot about organizational excellence, we've also created some opportunities for our staff. As I think all of you are aware, a couple of years ago, we had to stand up a security division in the airport to upgrade for our larger aircraft that were coming in. And when we did that, it was in the middle of fiscal year. We got them set up, set in. It was a brand-new security program and we trained them to do that security work. Since then, we've actually been cross-training them. So not only do they do the federal compliance on the TSA security side, they also do federal compliance on the FAA side and do a lot of self-inspections. They issue NOTAMs when we're having weather events like we're expecting over the next couple of days. So they're getting cross-trained quite a bit. And now as we start thinking about their future and wanting to retain that talent, we're thinking about new training opportunities we can give them and promotional opportunities. And so that's something that we're really happy about, working out and giving them those steps and opportunities the same way that we have on the maintenance side. So everyone's kind of treated equally there. So we've been doing really good at building that team environment. And now looking at 2020 operations, it's all about the staff and trying to maintain those daily operations and the federal compliance. And that's what it all boils down to, is those people, every single day, digging in and doing the best job that they can. And so we strive for excellence every day. They do a fantastic job of it. And we're also going to continue marketing and educating on air service. As you know, you know, Manhattan has high turnover of people coming in and out of town. And so we're constantly in an educational state and our marketing efforts really geared towards teaching people about the airport. We do everything we can to do outreach and speak to different groups and, and venues. So if you hear of any other groups too that want to hear an airport update, just reach out to me. I'm happy to, to coordinate that. Now, some key initiatives on the horizon. These are our big projects that are coming up. The parking lot project is under contract and contractors have been meeting, talking with our engineer, getting ready for that project. And as soon as the ground thaws, we should be able to begin construction. And by contract, the parking improvement project should be done by November 1. And so over that, the next few months too, we're going to work with the airport advisory board and get a parking management plan put together. And so that, we'll be presenting that to you as well over the next few months. The other big one that we have is a runway construction project. And right now, we're wrapping up planning and we hope to get a, a grant for the next federal fiscal year. So later on this year, we should be able to start in our design. And the design is really going to drive the choices of how we do construction phasing that will impact timeline and schedules. And so those things are, are on our horizon. And as far as priorities and requests go, when we first stood up that security division, we opened up the hours for 21 hours and seven days a week. We hired staff at the most, you know, minimal level possible to cover those times. But with staff, you have sick leave, vacation time, sometimes some medical issues. And so when those things hit, it puts us at a bind. And so we're kind of razor-thin there. And we have, like I said, a lot of cross-training, but it would be great for us to have additional staff and staffing to maintain those federal compliance things that we have to do. And lastly, is giving our, our employees the, the tools they need to succeed. And that is looking at our CIP. We have our inventory of all of our equipment, our vehicles and all the things that we have across the airport. And when we start kicking that can down the road, it starts adding up because, you know, maybe we don't buy that tractor this year that, that we need, but in the coming years, that's going to start breaking down further and it's on top of other things that we need. So we're going to continue to promote the need to replace our antiquated equipment and things that are identified in our CIP. And with that, I try to keep my comments short so that way I give you plenty of opportunity for Q and A.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. Questions?
So as part of the runway fix, would they, would they try to do something about that dip in the runway, or is it strictly going to be a kind of a superficial resurfacing? What's, what's the plan on that?
In all likelihood, it's going to be a full-depth reconstruct and that little slope will be fixed. There's a lot of different things that need to be corrected as part of the runway reconstruct. That is one of them.
So reconstruct, not re-pay for anything?
Right. It won't be a, it's not a rehab, you know, repair project. It'll be a reconstruct.
Other questions?
Just one, back to budget, you know, the airport, it's not revenue neutral. So in other words, we're not making a profit on the airport?
Right.
It's being subsidized. Is there any long-term plan to look at how to close that gap?
Yes. So that is a goal of ours federally. The FAA wants us to do everything possible to be financially self-sufficient. So wherever we can find areas for increasing revenue, we try to explore those to the best of our abilities. Keep in mind too, though, that when we've passed some projects as of late, we've had dedicated funding go towards those projects. So it's feeding debt service. For instance, passenger facility charges, PFCs, that's a federally, you know, controlled program. You got to apply for it. And we're at the cap of 450 per person. We collect those funds, but it's dedicated to the bond and interest for the terminal construction. When we start talking about parking and the potential revenue for that, it is a great revenue generator for airports across the nation, parking is. But for us to get that project done and pave everything out, install the revenue controls, do all the lighting, all that project requires cost. So for the first 15 years, likely, it's all that revenue is going to go into bonding. So again, bond and interest. The FBO facility was constructed that way too, where we issued a bond. The rent from that FBO goes towards the, the bond and interest of that facility. So over the next 15 years, a lot of our big revenue sources are tied into bond and interest. And so I think in the longer term, we will be set up- And so I think in the longer term, we will be set up very well for, uh, trying to narrow that gap of, uh, you know, getting some financial self-sufficiency.
And then we've had the big discussion on the width of this runway when it gets replaced. Is that looking positive or negative? I mean, we'll have to finance it if it, if if we can't get the federal government to do it, but what's the outlook on that?
So, uh, and you're right, we went back and forth with the FAA on that on a hundred feet versus a hundred and fifty. And we currently have a hundred and fifty feet. So what we want to do is maintain that width. The FAA right now is sticking to a hundred feet is what's eligible for reimbursement, that's ninety percent. And so it'll be identifying what, how can we fund the additional fifty feet? And so that's something that we're going to continue to work on over the, as we're planning it going through design.
Bernie, what were you going to throw in there about finance on this?
Well, I was just going to mention Jesse brought up such a good point about those passenger facility charges going to bond and interest. Over three hundred thousand, uh, of revenue goes in annually to meet those projects that have been done at the airport.
Thanks, Jesse. One of the things I did want to say, um, when we talk about, uh, the airport, let's say, uh, it it's one of those things that drives our businesses as well. So the economy in in the city of Manhattan, I don't know how we would quantify the people or the businesses that that happen through that travel. Because that's one of the reasons Manhattan is successful is because of the airport. And, um, I think the fee structure and the bond and interest, the parking, the airplanes themselves, this provides such an easy transition, a ten-minute drive to Manhattan or within the region, it's about fifteen, twenty minutes within the region. So the fact that you've had the best year ever means that somebody's coming here and spending money also in, uh, in the city of Manhattan. And, uh, I don't know, like I said, how to capture that amount, but I think it plays out differently. That might not just be going towards the airport, but it's a revenue that's coming into Manhattan, whether it's sales tax or however it is, whatever they're spending here. So I don't know how to look at that.
So there's a couple of different ways and, um, over the course of our ten years, you know, with American, uh, K D O did a study and used two thousand and eight data and issued in two thousand and nine on economic impacts of the airport. So this was mostly pre-American airlines coming in. And Manhattan Regional Airport was, um, estimated to have, it was about twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars in economic impacts. Uh, about three years later, the city, uh, contracted for a consultant to do an economic impact study update. And that number jumped up almost double, so it was about forty-something million dollars in economic impacts. Uh, five years later, K D O came back and redid that study, which happened, I think it's four years ago now, uh, which was before a record-setting years. That one showed we were about fifty-five million dollars in economic impacts and eight hundred and something jobs. And I could look up the exact numbers if you want to see that report. That is before a record year. So I think that, um, i- in the last three years, what we've seen in increase in employments and a lot more activity, you're right, it it really contributes a lot to the business. There's no doubt in my mind that we're over sixty million dollars in total economic impacts. Um, but that would require a, uh, another study to be done in order to really quantify that. But, so we have a little bit outdated numbers, but it still shows a significant economic impact to the region and how many jobs that we support as well.
Yeah, and I think that's what drives Manhattan to be more successful than other communities. Uh, and I'm glad you're, um, looking at the economic impact of it and how it's translating into our businesses and into the city of Manhattan. That's something that's not purely dedicated to the airport, but it's because of the airport that things are happening in Manhattan. So, well, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. And we will look forward to see how the the, um, parking ends up and the runway ends up. So lots of projects to discuss in the future. Thanks a lot, Jesse.
Thank you.
Eric Cattell, Director of Community Development.
And the nominee and winner of the best use of small font in your presentation.
Is that like font five?
See, my workaround is not to talk a long time, I just have the words.
Get on your own.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, year in review for two thousand and nineteen, as you know, we did the small cell aesthetic standards, which the F C C mandated a small window of opportunity. Um, they gave us until April, from from last January to April to institute, um, aesthetic standards. If the city wanted to have some, you had to do it by then. We worked with the legal department and and Public Works and got that done. Um, we did the C three, um, Aggieville District, um, text amendments. And that was an interim fix until the U D O is finished so that we could facilitate by right development in Aggieville that conforms with the Aggieville community vision. And that dealt with some of the height issues and, um, some parking issues and some design standards. And again, until the U D O is fully in effect. Uh, we worked with Riley County to create that notice of potential noise impact, um, which deals with Fort Riley noise and that area a lot in the western portions of Manhattan. Um, Bradley County is pretty close to actually implementing that. And, um, the City Commission here and and the City of Riley, Ogden and the Town Commission all have signed off on that. And so that will automatically be filed on the properties within that area of notice or of potential impact. And it doesn't rely on realtors or builders to provide that notice. Um, the draft U D O, um, the city staff spent a long time rewriting portions of that and restructuring the document. Um, we've sent it to the consultant, we were hoping to get it back last week, the public review draft, so hopefully we'll get it this week. Um, flood, uh, flood threat, it was really a protracted through spring and summer, almost all the way to the fall. Um, we had several employees that were heavily involved with that and monitoring, helping out with the E O C, providing information to the E O C. Working with Wood Environmental to develop the forty-two different flood scenarios along the Kansas and Blue Rivers, again, to help with preparations and emergency, um, management, decision-making and conducting a lot of public outreach and education concerning insurance, flood insurance and flood maps and how to read them and that type of thing. Continuing with the with the flooding issue, the Brazilian Wildcat Creek Initiative, uh, we used three different FEMA grants to do the voluntary buyouts. We bought out this past year and, um, just up until the end of this two thousand and nineteen, five single-family homes and twelve townhomes. Still one home that's going to be moved out of the city and that will end those three grants. Uh, we also worked again with Wood Environmental to do the two-D flood modeling of that watershed. And the staff training has occurred, both for city and county staff to be able to run the model. Um, that model will help us do what-if scenarios on physical changes to the watershed, whether it's a detention pond or a diversion structure. Um, it will help us understand if those are positive or negative improvements in the in the watershed. Uh, we held eight citizen advisory committee meetings over the year and, um, created some draft policies, mitigation policies and watershed improvement. Um, discussions, again, the ponds or those farm ponds, uh, that have been looked at up, um, in the upper reaches of the watershed. Uh, the detention structures were more on Fort Riley and you've you've heard some of the information on that. Um, we've been preparing for the two thousand and twenty census, which is April first. And actually this this time around, it will start a little bit earlier and it will be online and on your phone and not so much paper. So it's quite a bit different this year. Luca, that's the local update of census addresses, that the census is all worked off of addresses. So we work with the census to make sure they have the full address ranges of the city. The P S A P, that's working with Riley County to make sure that all the census tracts and block group boundaries are up to date and modified as needed based on, um, growth since the last decennial census. And your construction program is making sure that anything that's under construction now, whether it's residential or non-residential, if we anticipate that it will be occupied and operational on Census Day, we want to make sure that it's in that address range. Um, we worked with the county to establish the Complete Count Committee. Uh, they also have a subcommittee called the Communications Committee and they've developed a public outreach campaign, which has already been launched. And that will go all the way up through, um, Census Day and and past. Uh, we work with the City Manager's Office to amend the Lee Mill Village P U D so that, uh, the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership could purchase those, I'm forgetting how many lots it was, but quite a few lots to to build thirty-five senior housing units that are duplex, um, structures. We also, uh, engaged quite a bit with the Community Solutions to Affordable Housing Group, which, um, you know, was, uh, some folks at Case State kind of were running that public engagement process. But we were involved in a number of their subcommittees and, um, field trips to Lawrence to look at their land trust and that type of thing. C D B G funding that we use this for bigger projects. We funded the lion's share of the Douglas Center Recreation Designs of Bruce McMillan's work. We also funded the Crisis Center Design, um, Concept Designs, which, uh, they're using to do fundraising for a new Crisis Center. Uh, we rehabbed eight low and moderate income homeowners' homes and one mobile home this year. And we provided, um, funding to five different social service agencies that you can see there. Um, the E S G, that's the Emergency Solution Grant, which is another, um, pot of money that comes from the feds through the state of Kansas that we apply every year. And that goes to M I S A and the Crisis Center for some of their, um, activities, some of the programs that they, you know, run. Twenty twenty operations, you know, the Planning and Community Development Department, uh, we're we're just staff. Uh, we don't have a lot of equipment, so we do a lot of public engagement. And as you can see, we lay it on to a lot of different boards, Planning Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Historic Resources Board, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Complete Count Committee, uh, Resin Wildcat Creek and the Neighborhood M H K Program. And so we facilitate that development review and approval process. The D R C is an internal committee of departments that review developments that are coming through the process. And we facilitate that communication with consultants and the different departments and basically hand and hold their hands through the development review process through the Planning Board and City Commission. And then we also help the public through that process and understanding what's going on with developments and then just do other types of citizen engagement and answering the general questions that we get daily. Uh, we also submit grants for C D B G and E S G and then administer them when we receive those allocations. And we tend to do a lot of research, just general kinds of research, um, for other departments who are supporting things that the City Commission might want, such as the small cell aesthetic standards. On the horizon, uh, you've heard O E I a lot tonight. Um, every one of my staff members, I, our department's relatively small, we have ten, when we're fully staffed, we would have ten, um, staff members, not counting interns. Every one of my staff has been involved in the subcommittees of O E I and the follow-up discussions. They're very committed to that whole process for the organization. We're also heavily involved with our Health Committee, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Technology, Smart City and Web Page Committees, which are all other committees that don't directly have O E I focus, but altogether do, um, impact O E I. Uh, of course, the two thousand and twenty census activities leading up till April first. Adopting and implementing the U D O is a very important goal for us this year, uh, as well as the Bicycle Pedestrian Systems Plan, which you'll see next month. Uh, the Housing Study is something that we will be starting, um, I think at your next meeting, you'll be seeing a draft R F Q. I mean, it will take a little bit of time to work through that and get a consultant, um, identified. Probably won't be till summer before that actually is under contract. And we want to get through the U D O and some of the other stuff before we get heavily into starting the Housing Study. Um, Aggieville Historic Survey is well underway, um, with a a local consultant doing that, that's providing the background data for property owners in Aggieville to be able to use that if they want to apply for tax credits. Um, we're hoping to get a early report on that in March. The Green Valley Annexation Study, we're in Phase One, budget-wise, we've spent about thirty percent of the budget. Julie Herlins is, uh, the primary consultant that we've been working with and she's been spending, we're we're pretty much done getting the assumptions figured out. There was some final information there, um, I saw today that they're wanting to get from R C P D to clarify some cost questions. Um, but once that's done, the model is being built, things should go pretty quickly. And we're anticipating her, um, initial draft report sometime in March. Phase Two is depending on what happens with Phase One and what what you as a commission decide to do with the recommendations of her report on if we implement any of that annexation or not. Phase Two would be doing the statutory services plan that's required before you can do any type of unilateral annexation. Um, we'll continue to assist the City Manager's Office with the Aggieville, uh, Community Vision Initiatives. We'll also later in the year, probably towards the last quarter of the year, um, start an update of the Downtown Tomorrow Plan. There's some edges of downtown, um, particularly the southwest corner, that are just vacant areas, some unutilized land. And we think that we can relook at that area to try and get things happening there. Uh, flood mitigation and education activities is year-round ongoing and we'll continue with with that type of thing. Uh, the Wildcat Creek Management Plan, which is really what Brazilian Wildcat Creek is working on right now. That should be done within about three months. And we're planning on hosting a community flood conference in March, which is educational, um, but essentially an educational campaign for the public, not not for flood experts. It's bringing in flood experts to talk about various issues. Um, department priorities and requests, we have a a vacant position that's been vacant for six months now. It's a little unusual because it's one of our entry-level positions and as you know, Case State has a planning school. And yet we can't attract someone to apply for it. That's pretty unusual. Usually we have a harder time attracting some of the higher-level positions to come back to Manhattan. But again, it's it's probably an issue of dealing with the market that we're competing with, unfortunately, is Kansas City. Planners graduate from school, they go for the bigger money generally. We train a lot of entry-level planners that study a year, a year or two and go out to other areas. And so this whole O E I initiative is very important, um, for our department as well, to make our organization attractive and competitive and so that we can retain employees. It it takes a lot of time and expense to train people and then they leave after a year or two. Um, you've heard, um, through the leadership retreat and other sources that Manhattan really is a, as a city, not just this organization, but our community, we really are needing to commit, compete on a regional and a global level now. And we need to be able to grow our job base, we need to attract professionals and other broad, um, workforces. And that takes, um, expanded placemaking, which you you heard earlier as well. And our department, Community Development, is one of the departments, as well as all the departments, that really are involved with placemaking initiatives. And for this organization, the City of Manhattan, City Hall, to really hit the ground running and and get the most bang for the buck, we need some good, um, long-term funding, long-term reinvestment and commitment into these projects and particularly O E I, again, so that our organization is an employer choice. So with that.
Thank you, Eric. Questions for Eric? Yeah, Eric.
Um, let me see where, so with the two, I have two questions. The first one, the Community Solutions Affordable Housing, that trip to Lawrence, I think Commissioner Morris and I both went on that and that was, uh, with, uh, Christine, uh, am I right? And she, so that was very, that that's dealing with the housing.
Christina Lacour, she's my grant administrator.
The, uh, how, the trust, uh, and how they operate things, but it's, that was very interesting. Um, glad to see her being part of that and that ties into the housing study. My question being, uh, the, are we funding that, is that funded just specifically through the city or is that a regional?
No, it's a City of Manhattan C I P project for two thousand and twenty.
And is that, I guess, with the region, the Flahells Regional Council has some other housing studies, uh, that are going on and this doesn't include, there's nothing to do with that, right?
They're separate, but we will coordinate as best we can. We've had discussions, um, before Gary Stith retired, we had discussions with him. We also had discussions with, um, Christine Rodriguez and and the Chambers Group to, on how can we use some of the same databases and things so that some of the housing studies, the different organizations. organizations are doing have the same foundation. So we've been looking at doing that, but to answer your question, this Housing Study is specifically city limits of Manhattan. Now, having said that, part of the early, part of the project, we'll be looking at our housing, our housing market goes beyond the city limits. There's a lot of employees, both for this organization and K-State and other industries in town that commute in. They don't live here for a reason, and we want to know why they don't live here. You know, is it, is it housing costs, is it other things? There's a whole bunch of issues, though. Some of the early part of that Housing Study will look at the broader housing market, you know, out into blue township and areas like that, but the actual study itself and the policy directions will be more just for the city.
The, the last part, I guess, is the HOME funds. Well, before that Housing Study, when, when is that on, that says key initiative on the horizon, and you mentioned you wanted to wait for UDO and some of the other things, so what is that kind of thought to be kicking off?
Well, that'll be at your next meeting.
Okay.
The draft RFQ will be at your next meeting, so we will start that discussion, but we'll want to get some other input into that RFQ, and then you do the advertisement for the consultant, consultant selection, finalize the scope of work and the contract, so I'm anticipating earliest will be summer before we actually are under contract with consultant.
All right. That satisfies my question. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Other than the gorilla being the levy, I wouldn't want Chad to think I wouldn't ask a question, but I am interested in some like new initiatives with regard to flooding that we might try here, and so I, it looks fairly routine, and I want to be sure that flooding does not get off of our radar and that we don't, that we, we have to just keep pushing as hard as we can, and I really appreciate the buyouts that we've been able to do. I don't know if that slows at all because of our, you know, our budget issues. I know that has a ticket number, dollar number to it. And the fact that the county and we have worked together on the Wildcat Creek and the 2D modeling, can you, do you, what, what is the county doing? I never hear about them having an initiative or accomplishing things with regard to flooding, so I, I'd have to ask them, right?
Yeah, I think you should.
That's what I thought you'd say. So what can we do? I'd like to have us explore that further and push harder.
Specifically with regard to Wildcat Creek, that's what the update of that watershed plan will show, and it's, what I didn't mention, it's not only looking at physical things and buyouts and mitigation policies, it's also looking at social vulnerability issues that a lot of the communities that are in Manhattan that are affected by flash flooding are some of the lower income, so part of that project is looking at how can we better serve those folks with preparedness and evacuation and all that as well. So there will be other things that you haven't seen before coming out with this update to that plan.
Oh, I guess I'm just getting impatient. Thank you.
Understandable.
I think that, I just would add that I think the modeling will help us with testing concepts. I know there's been a lot of, I think, discussion on your committee about physical improvements, so the model's going to be able to analyze whether or not that's going to be feasible and worthy as opposed to some other elements, whether it's buyout or, or that aspect of things, or redevelopment of other properties that you can't do, and I think something we didn't really dwell on is, that I think is a, is a good initiative, is a flood conference that's designed to, what are some new ideas, as well as using it to educate folks about a lot of those vulnerabilities, and are you prepared? And, and you know, what should you be doing to have your toolkit if you're in a flood-prone area, whether that's a flash flood prone area or something that's more significant?
Yeah, I'm, I know we're mostly spending FEMA money on those buyouts and stuff, but I'm, I'm not all that interested in spending a bunch more money to address the results of flooding as much as the prevention of that flooding, which is why maybe the next city-county meeting, we can chat with them a little bit and encourage them. I've always thought that, yeah, we've got to get the water slowed down before it gets to Manhattan, because once it's here, we're screwed, and so we need to figure out some way to, to have less water, less quickly hit the Wildcat Creek Bridge at scenic, and then whatever we can, if we can slow it down before that, I think we'll be okay most of the time. The flash flooding stuff, I'm not sure what we can always do about that, other than the seventy million dollars worth of storm sewer projects that we've got in the pipeline, which hopefully will solve the flash flooding issues.
Yeah, I think both Mark and Linda are right about the Wildcat Creek as well as the flash flooding. I think that's always been a concern. We're putting in lots of millions of dollars into some of these measures, and some of it we have control over and some of it we don't. So our partners at the county also have to work with us and Fort Riley as well, so I don't know what kind of funds, last I heard, they don't have as much funds to put into it like we do. We don't have enough funds either. What we don't want to see is the displacement of families, because we're not just displacing them for a month or two, it's long range, and several of them have been devastated. I mean, Nick can speak to that alone. So I'm glad we're talking about that. The UDO, I don't want any surprises, I'm looking forward to flipping through that more detailed, because that's kind of like going to be our plan, trying to stream, yeah, streamline everything into it. 2020 Census, again, collecting all of that so we know what kind of funds we can get. I'm glad it's going to be where you are on April 1st, that's going to be counted, because that's going to be very important to the City of Manhattan and Riley County and the rest of the region. I want to know what's happening with the Manhattan Emergency Shelter. Is it all up and going? There was some issues going on there for a little while.
Yeah, we had a, I think it was a fire line broke.
Right, and flooded, and it was just a mess.
And they had some mold issues, and so they were out of service for maybe six months, I think. But they've been back up, I think, since October, so they've been fully operational.
Okay, good, because that's something we need as well. I think everything you've addressed here is pretty comprehensive. Again, always comes back to staffing. Lots going on, but I think the UDO and flooding initiatives are extremely important for our community, and that's what we're trying to always react to, and it's, it's a pretty big deal. So thank you, Eric. I appreciate your time. Scott, Scott French, Director of Fire Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you and talk about the Fire Department. And so we'll start with recap and a couple of our accomplishments of 2019. We completed the Pott County Service Agreement to provide building and fire code inspections to the Blue Township Sewer District. This agreement has been in the works since 2015, and we officially started it January 1st of this year. Currently, we have three building permits in that process now. The program is designed to be revenue-neutral and utilizing the building permit fees to cover all costs associated with it. Now, the primary function of the Fire Department is our emergency response to, to protect this community. We responded to over twenty-six-hundred-and-fifty calls for service this year. That's an increase of two hundred calls over 2018. The department's average response time was better than the national standard response time by twenty seconds. There were no fire fatalities in 2019, however, we did have three civilians that had minor injuries due to fires. The department sent out, sent out our state search and rescue team and our state hazmat team to six different deployments in 2019. And our department is heavily involved with the flooding, and we'll call the almost opening of our floodgates, which was something we never want to see again, but that event involved many different agencies and city departments, and the cooperation between everyone is something that I think our community should be very proud of, and we heard a lot of compliments from those that came outside, from outside of the city on, on the work that was completed with it. The readiness, training, and preparation is essential to provide the level of service that is expected from us. As a department, we had over twenty thousand hours of training. Highlighting some of those trainings, events were the inter-agency active violence exercise that we conducted with the school district and our other emergency service partners. Hazmat training with the National Guard Civil Support Team, airport firefighter training we sent down to Fort Worth, Texas, our peer support and mental health training for our emergency responders, multiple continuing education opportunities with our local contractors, and we participated in the rental forum that was held at Kansas State University. We received over a hundred and fifty thousand in grants from the Department of Homeland Security and Northeast Regional Council for equipment and training. These projects included a new rescue boat and trailer, Duke or search and rescue dog, fine space equipment, hazardous materials detection equipment, and personnel expenses for specialized training and exercises. These are a few of the accomplishments we did from the Fire Department that I, I did get an opportunity to touch on, but I do want to make sure you're aware and understand that you have very dedicated staff and employees that are working hard for this community on a daily basis. Our operational overview is fairly consistent year to year. Our job is to respond and mitigate emergencies, training and preparation for those calls, provide education to the community, and enforce the city's codes, regulations, and ordinances through our inspections. Looking ahead to 2020 and 2021 as our priorities and our needs, our people are the most valuable asset we have. We have to focus on the retention of the staff, of our staff, and provide a workplace environment that not only attracts new employees, but also retains our current employees. Our risk reduction staff has many new faces, and those that have experience are in new roles in 2020. Training and educating this division is one of our top priorities. We'll continue to monitor the Pott County Service Agreements to ensure it remains revenue-neutral and works seamless with our other inspections that we conduct in the city. With the construction of the new county radio system, we'll be creating new operating procedures, training on all the new equipment, and making sure that our station notification, compatibility issues, and those unforeseen issues that come with all new systems are addressed quickly. The 2000 Dennison Station and Training Ground Lease that we have at K-State expires in 2034. There have been ongoing discussions with renewing this lease with K-State, however, with most of those discussions, they've talked about eliminating our training ground portion of that facility. A new site, we have identified a new site, but no decisions have been made on whether we actively negotiate a new land for the training facility, or we wait to ensure what K-State's intent is with our training ground. The 2000 Dennison Station, which is our headquarters station, is also thirty-five years old, and there's beginning to be more work that needs to be done there. We have over fifty thousand dollars' worth of concrete that needs repaired, and in the previous years, we've been able to utilize the Public Works labor staff to do that work with the sales tax that they're working on, the straight magnets, and the fact that they're having trouble maintaining their crews, we're not able to utilize them, so we're going to have to actually spend the extra cost of labor to hire contractors to do that work. The other thing that we have there is our station generator is obsolete. We're getting parts from eBay currently. That's also our alternative emergency operations center, and so one of the things we want to do when we go to replace that generator is to purchase one that's big enough to, to power the entire station, so we would have the ability to have emergency operations in the event we lost power. We also have our hazmat truck is a 1992. It's one of the oldest apparatuses in our fleet, and with the INBAF coming online, the necessary functionality of that vehicle is becoming inadequate, and so we're going to have to look to replacing that vehicle here in the next couple of years. We're working on a partnership with Manhattan Area Technical College to provide a fire science program, and obviously, that's very important to us with recruiting new employees in the future. It's great for the community because it'll bring a new, new program that currently anybody in this local area that wants to get into fire science, fire service, is either going to Hutchison or Kansas City to get that, those necessary skills of training. And finally, software costs continue to increase, and our current budget line items are going to have to increase with them. There's also a great deal amount of staff time invested in maintaining our current softwares and doing database work, and I don't believe that's going to be sustainable with the current staff that we have, especially when they're trying to juggle other responsibilities, and this was an add-on, and it's become a more of a full-time job for them, and so we're going to have to need to do something with that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that I thought you did an outstanding fire and all of the city, actually, but certainly you were lead with regard to the response to the Tuttle Creek almost flooding in the community, and the, so I appreciated the opportunity to tour the Emergency Operations Center and talk to some of the responders from out of state that were here, just to advise or learn or for whatever their purpose was, but that's always a good indicator of a good program, and I, I just think it's, it was an outstanding response, and I'm glad we didn't have to engage fully, so.
We had a lot of help, you know, GIS was, was super important, Community Development with some of the things they did in the modeling and getting that, Public Works and their staff, obviously Parks and Rec, and then City Manager's Office with our social media and our PIOs were just phenomenal.
Particularly, it was interesting to see the public information officers come together, because that was really the first time that it's been, that I'm aware of, that it, that worked that way, or at least we have enough PIOs for it to work now.
That's key, having enough to be able to do that.
Other questions? Yeah, Eric.
Yeah, there's a lot of outstanding things that you guys are doing. Two things that really stood out to me when I visited with you before and tonight on your report are the, the peer support and the mental health with the suicide rate among first responders being such a, such a dramatic increase in the last decade or so. I think that's a huge thing that you're doing, and I like to see it. I know RCPD is doing their peer support as well, where you're all helping out each other, and that's, that's what we've got to do. The other thing is MATC, that partnership with the fire science is a kind of a game-changer for the region, not just for us, but it helps bring a lot of, a lot, a lot of needed things here, and I was just wondering if you would talk about that partnership you've had with students coming through the program? That was news to me, and I, that was interesting and a really cool partnership, it sounded like.
I assume you're talking about our student firefighter program?
Yes.
Yeah, we've had that in existence since, I believe, 1994 that, that program's existed, and what we do is we take on, we currently have twelve student positions available, and as long as a student works a thousand hours, we could, they can't work any more than a thousand hours for the Fire Department, and as part of the workday, they have to maintain twelve hours at Kansas State University or Manhattan Christian College and maintain a 2.0 grade point average, and we run them through the academy, the workforce for their, while they're here going to school, and some of them we get, obviously, we are able to cabbage onto and keep with us, and some of them move on, but it's a great program. I am actually a product of that program, as well as our deputy chief, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Scott. One of the things I wanted to say is, you said you had a twenty-six-hundred responses and no lives lost. That's pretty incredible. People often complain about all the codes we have, but I would have to assume all the codes have saved a lot of lives at the same time.
Yeah, codes are hard to, to define how, how well they work, but I can assure you that if you take a community of our size and what we have in this community, our responses, our run numbers are lower than any of our comparables with that. our run numbers are lower than any of our comparables with the, with the size. So I would have to assume that our code and enforcement has been part of that, that connection.
That, that's something we don't brag about. I think some of the things that we put in as safety features, we have options not to, but we want it to be safe, and I'm glad we didn't lose any lives. There might be damage, there might be a few injuries, but certainly 2,600 responses is quite incredible stat to not have anybody get, lose any lives over that. Thank you once again, and thank you to your department. Eddie, Eddie Estes from the Director of Public, I'm sorry, from Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, before we dive into this, I want two things, please. I want to just point out staff that's here with Parks and Recreation tonight. Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director. Casey Smithson, Park Superintendent. Alfonso Leva, Park Planner. Bob Shoemaker, Zoo Director. Randy Clifford, Director of Recreation. I do that partially just to wake them up. They're here late, and they're typically not at these meetings. Second thing I want to kind of clarify tonight, as a past winner of the Department Head Retreat Windbag Award, I'm going to work real hard not to win that tonight. And looking at the score sheet over here, I think I'm in pretty good shape.
There is a Best Supporting Actor Award.
We're saving the best for last, I think.
We'll stay away from that one. 2019 review, before I even go into that, I, I really want to point out the accomplishments. 2019 review that we submit, City Manager, Parks and Recreation is typically five, six, seven pages. I think you've seen that a little bit. So I only have a handful on here. It doesn't represent our seven divisions real well, but with seven divisions, two PowerPoint pages, I'm pretty challenged tonight to not win this Windbag Award. So, but I know I got Rob behind me. Public projects, many of you are at the Johnny Call dedication, as well as the Blue Montiel Scenic Overlook dedication. Great projects, privately funded, really nice benefits for those parks. Warner Park Master Plan, yes, we accomplished that. It took quite a number of meetings, late-night meetings. Alfonso Leva, thank you for that. This city commission has approved that plan. The Animal Shelter KSU partnership is something I'm, I'm really pleased with. Deb Watkins, our Animal Shelter Director, if you haven't had an opportunity to meet her and to engage conversation with her, please get out to that facility and do so. Her work with K-State has been a real accomplishment. We're working towards our shelter to be a model shelter for northeast Kansas in our partnership with Kansas State University's Vet Med Shelter Program. Apparently, K-State's performing nearly all of our vet services at no cost to the city. We're going to continue to work on that. Kansas Health Foundation, through the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, we received a grant for scholarship funding for $15,000 this past year for recreation programs. Susan Adams at the Discovery Center received a couple $10,000 grants. Carolyn Pine Foundation for interpretive trail panels, several, several of you were at that dedication as well. Again, it provides another way to enjoy the Discovery Center as well. Those grants also helped construct what they call their outdoor classroom. Mr. Leva was a big part of that as well. Tournaments this past year, record number, 584 teams, over 7,000 participants. I believe 70% of those teams were from out of the area. Using CVB data, that generated about 2.9 million in economic impact for the community with those tournaments hosted this year. 2020 operations, part-time seasonal staff recruitment. Seasonal staff are very critical to our operations. We employ hundreds of people throughout the entire year. It's becoming a little more challenging as that workforce is shrinking a little bit. It's becoming much more competitive or challenged each year to be able to come up with enough employees. You've heard the lifeguard saga that we typically go through. It was a little unusual this last year. We, we didn't have too much problem securing lifeguards, but I don't think Casey was ever able to secure all of the seasonal staff that he typically does, do an awful lot of mowing around town. Finalized staffing and operational plans for new recreation centers. Randy's working hard with his Recreation Division, developing a plan utilizing both a blend of existing staff as well as new staff, and you'll see that recommendation in that 2021 budget. Ongoing flood repair. I think Casey's tired of the word flood. I think it, it kind of is part of his daily vocabulary. Two projects recently completed, I think you saw pictures previously that City Manager provided of the Wildcat Creek stabilization project. Katie, Casey and his crew were a big part of that as they removed a significant log jam in preparation for that streamside repair. Another project that was substantial for us was a replacement of the playground surfacing out at Danberg Park. Substantial project, but it really brought that playground in a, in a, in a better state than what it had been previously. Quite a number of outstanding projects still to occur. The parking lot, the gravel parking lot, which is our largest parking lot there at Danberg, still needs to be repaired. Whether we get mitigation, meaning we'll be able to hard-surface our concrete, that's still in debate with FEMA, but there's definitely repairs that still have to occur, which will occupy quite a bit of Casey's staff in the upcoming year. We also have trail repair, fencing repair. We have a shed that's been damaged, and we need to continue to talk with FEMA about mitigation to move that shed as well. The fountain on the lake still needs to be replaced. Casey's been quite a bit occupied with, with FEMA projects without a doubt for the last more than a year. Community engagement, critical to Parks and Recreation. In the seven pages of accomplishments in this last year, you'll see we had, I believe, 69 public engagement opportunities. Wyatt, Alfonso, Casey, they're becoming experts in community engagement. I pointed out as well, we have five different advisory boards that we work with. I thought we were the champion in that area until I see Eric's list. I'm quite impressed with that. But you're well aware of our, our advisory boards. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Arts and Humanities Advisory Board, which has an exciting project coming up with introduction of public art in the community. Douglas Center Advisory Board, we're working with some ordinance alterations in that regard. Quite a number of advisory boards, as well as other support groups that Scott has at the, at the zoo, with the Friends of Sunset Zoo and Zoo Trust, as well as the Discovery Center has both an advisory board and a foundation. Critical groups for us to secure public input. Teresa Muller, our Community Relations Director, is currently working on a strategic marketing plan for our department to help us understand how to better engage the community, how to better promote our programs and activities to drive more attendance to our programs and activities. Community engagement, community interaction, community input is critical to make sure that we understand we're providing what the community would like to see. The last one, increased mowing areas. I put that up there simply because our workload continues to increase. I'll state in here later, Casey continues to struggle with staffing as well. Tammy hits it on the head when she says retention is challenging. But then Parks and Recreation, park maintenance, as well as our animal staff at the zoo and at the animal shelter are some of the lowest-paid staff positions that we have in the city. We see that because of the lack of being able to fill positions, which increases that workload with that mowing around the community. Key initiatives on the horizon, obviously, new facilities is dominating everything that we do and talk about today, both with the Douglas Center and the middle schools. Please understand, we're talking about 100,000 square feet of new space that we do not have today, that we are going to be working to staff and operate in the coming years. But I also want to point out with that, there's going to, there is going to be staffing and operational cost to those facilities. If you recall in our early discussions with the community, we were only going to utilize those facilities in non-school timeframes, meaning the school is going to utilize those facilities throughout the day, and then the community would use those after school was out. The community has been quite insistent that they're able to access those facilities all day, every day. And we've been working to make sure that we do have a security aspect in the design so school can use during school day, community can use during the school day as well. What that does, though, that ups that staffing impact, and it ups that operational cost impact. Obviously, we'll be discussing this a lot during 2021 budget development. Expedition Asia, commission has hosted this topic before. Currently, city staff, zoo staff are working with the trust. They're participating in the evaluation. We're working with KBS Construction, the original contractor, as well as GLMV Architects to value engineer that project into an affordable project. We intend to bring that back, or hopefully be able to be under construction in 2020 with that project. We'll need to continue to evaluate it, but we appreciate the trust input as well as city staff's input to understand how we can reduce that project and get it under construction. Sales tax-funded trail projects, we had a very thorough presentation on that last week, but we do hope to initiate several of those projects in the upcoming year. Parkland development, we've added quite a bit of parkland over the last year or two. We do have some projects to start with Roger Schultz Park, minimal improvements. Full development of those parklands is going to require, you know, future capital projects to be able to fully develop those projects. Sales tax-funded trail money is going to assist with some trail development, but full development of those parklands is going to require additional capital. Discovery Center, second floor kidscape, that's a prime, primary fundraising effort of the foundation to complete that second floor of the Discovery Center with a kid, kidscape permanent attraction. What that will also do for us is lessen the dependence, it won't eliminate, it will lessen the dependence on temporary exhibits. We'll have something that will be attractive to all audiences. It's always envisioned for that second floor to be completed, and we appreciate the foundation's effort, their fundraising effort to generate something. We're, we're working right now with, I call it RFQ and RFP, and we intend to get that to the commission to look at it, talk more about the details of what that second floor would be, and we hope to do that yet this spring. Agaville Streetscapes, new parking garage maintenance, I, I put those on there as simply additional workload on the horizon, things that are expanding within the community that somebody's going to have to deal with. We currently take care of the existing parking garage. We currently take care of the existing Agaville Streetscape, but as those are bolstered, improved, expanded, that's going to fall on our shoulders as well. So Department of Priorities and Requests, obviously, new facilities. Adequate facilities for city staff. You've heard OEI, you've heard retention of staff, recruitment of staff. Having adequate facilities for city staff is very, very important, not just a joint maintenance facility, but also improvements to the maintenance shop on El Paso Lane. Funding new facility operations, again, Douglas and Middle School Rec Centers, 100,000 square feet of new additional indoor space that's coming to us that we are going to have to fully fund and staff and operate. The community has invested tremendously in these facilities with their votes of confidence for these facilities. Our obligation now is to operate these to their full expectations. OEI, Parks and Recreation staff is fully supported. The hiring, training, retention of employees, reducing turnover, making ourselves a more attractive employer. As I said, as Tammy stated, several of our positions are on the very low end of the scale. It makes it challenging to retain. What can we do to make sure that we can attract and retain employees? Casey spent the last two years without full staff. I think finally, just this year, is he able to be full staff in his park maintenance. When you combine the difficulty of hiring full-time staff and attracting seasonal staff, it's, it's been quite a blow for our parks maintenance as they've been tasked with flood recovery. Very supportive of OEI and becoming employer of choice. I put this last one also, CIP strategy to address a wide variety of things that come to us, and we deal with in our department. Our department alone, our CIP request over the next three, four, five, six, seven years is, is millions of dollars. A strategy to be able to ward off deferred, deferred maintenance, to make sure that we're maintaining facilities adequately, we're replacing equipment as needed. We do not have a dedicated funding source for our capital projects. We have special Parks and Recreation that we utilize to a certain extent. We receive annually about $500,000 for Special Parks and Recreation. Quite a bit of that is committed to existing projects. So a strategy to be able to continue to maintain is going to be very important in the coming years. With that, happy to answer any questions.
So what do you attribute the surge of the record number of tournaments in town? Is it because of the all-weather, all-purpose surfaces out there?
Since, since we had that installed, our tournament numbers have continued to climb, and it goes back to our original assurance of play. That's pretty critical when you're traveling with kids and trying to schedule a short summer with as many programs, activities, and ballgames as possible.
Okay, next question. Did we host any swim meets? Is that anything that we ever do at City Park?
Typically, one.
Okay.
And some years, we've had two. That's with the Marlins, you, you're familiar, you know what the Marlins are. They typically always have one meet. I believe it was been several years ago when they had two. They commonly, and I don't want to speak for them, but what I do know, they have to put a bid in for a second meet, and whether they're successful with that bid sometimes determines whether they have a second meet or not.
Is that a moneymaker for us at all, or is it just tie-up the pools so nobody can...
It's a dollar a swimmer a day. It ties up the pools, but it's a very well-supported program. It teaches a tremendous number of kids to swim.
As far as the meets go, that's not really a moneymaker for us, probably?
It covers its costs because they pay a dollar swimmer as well as the staffing cost.
Okay. And if it's, and I don't know, there's a break-even point, I suspect, but on the, on the mowing, by the time we pay somebody and if we have, I don't know if all of your summer help probably doesn't get ininsurance benefits and a bunch of other stuff, I suppose, but I, I'm not sure at what point any of the mowing could be contracted out. Like I was going to say, if you're not having to pay all the benefits that Blueville or somebody else would pay, then obviously, they're going to be...
We do a tremendous contracting now. Our, our contract mowing is, gosh, it's well in excess of $40,000 at this point. There's close to 40 different locations that we do contract mowing. Typically, they're smaller locations. Most of our equipment is six-foot and bigger. The smaller locations are sporadic around town, and so, yes, we pay somebody to, to do a tremendous amount of mowing. We don't pay anybody to do sports fields mowings where we do it more frequently. Our larger mowers, which are... Our larger mowers, which are not something that most contractors would typically have, are able to cover that ground in fairly short order. It's just been a challenge for us the last couple of years because of the lack of seasonals, the lack of full-time, and just some of those other additional duties.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that. We took over some of KDOT's right-of-way that you had on there. Has anybody considered just, you know, not doing that or taking a look at some of the mowing and say, "Fine, how about just leave the Kansas grass back to tall grass and not worry about it"? I know Mike Dodson wouldn't agree with that if he was still here.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
But I'm just not, you know, I'd never been that impressed with, maybe we're just mowing too much and we could take a look at reducing some costs there because I don't see any harm in some cases for some of that grass to be a little bit higher.
I don't disagree. We do mow a lot, more than 1,000 acres, more than 10% of the community.
How frequent do you mow the right-of-way? I think you just make one pass or two passes, minimum.
The contracts we have is for once a month.
Okay.
For eight or nine months. It didn't go to full mowing contract last year.
Okay.
And yes, it's for 15-foot out from the roadway.
Yeah, okay, good. I remember the discussion in the community after the pools were built and that the design of the pools required a lot of staff, a lot of lifeguards because of the curves. Are we looking at the maintain number of employees, operational employees that will be needed in the gyms as we do the design to keep from maybe making that kind of a commitment again?
It's a different type.
I've never asked that question.
Sure. It's a different type of supervision.
Yeah.
But as we've toured, cameras are critical, and the more cameras you can have, the fewer people that you have. We've tried to assist in the design, input in the design so that we can see as well and so we don't have hiding points that are where people can't be seen, and we do intend to utilize as much camera, which helps our supervision as possible.
But I'm talking about the design of the new buildings. We are, okay.
Yes.
I want to be sure that it's, I mean, cameras are great. They don't work sometime, you know, there are problems with that. We have, I remember the agreement that we had with, have with school district for the two middle school gyms and to share that daytime use, evening use kind of thing. I wasn't aware that you're receiving community pressure about keeping them open in the daytime also.
Because we worked with the steering committee and starting the design, we heard that very loudly around the community and that the community wanted access to these facilities throughout the day.
Will that depend, your continuing support of that, would that continue on usage, be dependent upon usage?
Yes.
I would imagine it would.
We're designing these facilities so that school usage and public usage is separate, and it can occur anytime during the day.
Because I knew what was happening up until some, it's just I haven't had an update lately, I guess. And what about the Douglas Center? There's not going to be any sharing there? That'll be totally the city's.
Correct.
Support, programs.
We intend to share it fully with the community.
Well, no, I just mean we aren't going to.
I'm teasing, yes.
Yeah, good, okay, got it. Okay, thanks.
So during the day, the city is still going to be responsible for some of the monitoring of the centers during the day even though when school is in session and they have people milling around?
That's correct.
The, and the problem is, it's the same taxpayers are going to foot the bill, whether we charge them to pay for city employees to watch the place or whether the school district hires people to, and pays them to watch the place. It's the same taxpayers paying it one way or another, but it seems to me, well, yeah, so it doesn't make any difference on the big picture, but it just seems to me if the, if the schools, yeah, during the daytime, I can understand the schools sort of monitoring the place, and then after hours, then it would be the city's responsibility. But I don't know if you're going to have separate areas where the kids and the public, are they going to be able to interact?
No.
So some creeper can't walk in off the street and interact with the kids?
Correct.
That part's going to be separate.
The school district is with us with the design, and the security and separation is very important, and that's being designed into it.
Okay, so that doesn't limit, on the big picture, like on weekends or something when they need, is there, I guess as long as you can.
Fully open the facility.
There you go.
Yes.
As somebody that you presented that plan to on the school board, I would just say that there is, I think, some educating that needs to happen more on that and that it isn't as easy as saying that it is the same taxpayer because the school district has a larger tax district that includes different people and we serve different, those buildings will be serving different people that are outside of city limits technically. Off that subject completely, you mentioned public art, and I, this is just putting it out there, it means nothing, let it go by if it doesn't have any traction to it, but the, I ran into Ann from Atta Bus this weekend, and we, you know, she, they were talking about the bus stops, and one of the things we talked about, since I know when likes to talk about busing and bus stops, I thought I'd try to help you win your award, but the public arts aspect of some of the traveling I did, there was a lot of benches, public bench, bus stop benches that was also public art, and I thought that was just an idea to throw out there as those discussions happen longer. For you as well as Jason to a degree, there's, goes back to the time when we were working on the Peace Memorial Auditorium. I was on the Parks and Rec Board, and then that discussion became more about the history. And as we look at the Douglas Center and the Rec Center there, I think it would, I'd like it to be on your guys' radar now rather than later, that I'd like to capture some of that history, some of the history around the facility, the USO, black history in our community, underground railroad history. There's lots of history, and there isn't a place to capture that necessarily. As we go forward with that, I wanted to throw that out there rather than put a wrench in it as we get down the road farther along.
I'll just say, with all those facilities, it certainly has been a topic. We've tried to allocate some dollars specifically for that at the Douglas Center. Mr. Baker is a perfect person to help us with that. We don't know what that looks like exactly. I think it's some type of graphics, but we've intended to design some space where those graphics could be housed and that could show that history, that Yuma Street history. We also use the word public art, art with the middle school facilities. I don't know what that looks like exactly as well. We do have money allocated for graphics in that facility to make it a little bit more entertaining than just a painted wall. So we do intend, we've been having those discussions. I just can't tell you what that's going to look like exactly yet.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we did discuss the history component of it. I think one of the things, when we talked about the middle school expansions for these community rec centers, let's say, that they attached, I was also under the impression that, I agree with the community, I thought that it was going to be open all day for the community members or kind of alternate days or something of that sort. But the major revenue source, one of the major revenue sources was going to be competitive play. Even though it's open to the community, the other piece was for all of those indoor tournaments that we could be getting. And I know CBB and they have their steering committee, or some of their members from the chamber and everybody working on it with Gail Urban and such. So hopefully, that comes to fruition because they do schedule ahead of time. Whenever we are ready to open, that we, if we plan on having wrestling tournaments or whatever types of volleyball tournaments, I don't know, whatever kind of tournaments that they are, that we do have this, that's one of the main revenue sources we were going to use, not just to tax our taxpayers even more, but have that piece, just like we did with the artificial terrains at Annenberg Park and everywhere else, as well as the baseball fields that we'll have. So that was one of the plans. So I would like to see where we are in that discussion. I've asked several times, and I know it's kind of there, but I don't know where we are on that.
It's early to be able to say we are scheduling tournaments in those facilities. We haven't broken ground yet. We hope to do that in March or so.
Right.
It is beneficial that Marshall Wazell is on our advisory board now, and so that's a good interface between the department as well as CBB and their marketing efforts towards that as well. Lots of debate early on tournaments. Again, we had always originated these facilities to make sure that they served the community first and foremost, and they were designed in a way that could accommodate tournaments. But we are approaching that carefully because tournaments will push out community use. We certainly can do both.
It was supposed to.
I don't want to see one or the other dominate. We'll have to do that similar to what we do. That's why I talked about tournaments tonight and the impact to the community. We're able to manage that with Twin Oaks and Annenberg and the soccer and baseball fields, softball fields there so that our programs as well as community groups have tremendous access as well as tournaments, and we'll be approaching these the same.
Well, I know it's early. I know we haven't broken ground, but I also know these tournaments get planned years ahead of time, and that's why I keep pushing it. Because if we're not on anybody's radar, that means other communities around us are going to be picking that up. We want our community to enjoy it. I certainly do. That's what's prompted all of this. But the previous catalyst for this was the Fieldhouse Project. So to have some of those indoor competitive plays as a revenue source, I'm not making the assumption that every week and every day is going to be competitive.
True.
But we should be on their radar somewhere if they're going to have wrestling, gymnastics, cheerleading, whatever it is, that this is one of their stops every now and then. Otherwise, it can't fall completely on our taxpayers. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Sure, understand that.
Thank you, Eddie.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Last, and maybe the most important, I don't know, I wouldn't say that, Rob Otte, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the next two hours and 15 minutes.
Yes, yes.
Remaining two slides.
We do have a 12 o'clock time limit now.
That's two hours and 15 minutes. 2019 in review. In 2019, the Engineering Division paid out $12 million to contractors. Of that 12 million, roughly 3 million is spent on transportation. Of that 3 million, 1.4 million was spent on pedestrian or trail improvements. It's roughly almost 12% of money spent in 2019 was on trail and pedestrian improvements. Of the lane miles improved, brand-new streets, in other words, additions to the community, streets that never existed before, 1.4 lane miles. Full-depth repair, 6.4 lane miles. Asphalt milling overlay, 4.1 lane miles. Sidewalks, we built almost 1.7 miles of sidewalks centerline, whether it was 5-foot, 8-foot, or 10-foot. And then ADA ramps, we built 79 different ADA ramps. Breaking it down into, I guess, my traditional four emphasis areas, obviously, we completed some subdivisions. Several more were Ames, Elijah, Northwing, Heritage Square North. We do have out-to-bid Stonehaven, Scenic Meadows, and one of my favorite projects, kind of related to subdivisions, was the Park and Rec land, the VMI track that was secured from the state of Kansas adjacent to Scenic Meadows. On the transportation side, we completed numerous things. North Manhattan from Research Drive through Baker's Way, we did get out the bid, and construction will continue for College and Kimball. Utility relocation on College Avenue. Utility relocation for Senrec. Juliet Avenue Phase 3, the Brick Streets was completed. Traffic signal UPS and controller upgrades were completed, which is Phase 3 of 5. 11th and Points intersection was completed. Dickinson College pedestrian crossing upgrade was completed. Kimball from Vanessa Hudson, widening and turn lanes and trail. Sidewalk gap projects throughout the community, and we bid and started on the Kimball and US24 intersection. We bid, and we will have more safe routes to school projects that will be completed in 2012, I'm sorry, 2020, and also numerous pavement rehab. I've already given you those numbers. Includes some of the larger ones, which was Kimball Avenue, east of K113, Berry Streets and Northview, as well as starting work in Stag Hill area, Bergman School area, and patched significant number of potholes by street crews. And the water side, South Delaware Water Line, Juliet Water Line, Valv and Hydrant replacement project, well rehab, Genesis Stag Hill Booster Station, Water Main relocation, DeWaltley addition, Crown C Circle Water Line, the water treatment plants, SCADA servers were upgraded, data collection units and software server upgrades at the water, for collecting water meter data. Replacement of water treatment plant, influent and effluent meters, repainting of Blument Water Tower, water treatment plant security upgrades for entry points. We did start designing several water mains, Judson, Pierre, Hudson, K18, and Wildcat Creek Bridge for that project that's coming that you all will really enjoy this summer. And most importantly, we met all federal and state water standards, produced 1.9 million, I'm sorry, billion gallons of water in 2019. Wastewater side, large sanitary sewer projects inspection cured in place, pipe project 2019 completed, dealt with two sinkholes thanks to the flooding in Turtle Creek, the one at Blument's getting close to wrapping up. 17th and Houston sanitary sewer project, over 53,000 lineal feet of sanitary sewer main was inspected by the city crews. Wastewater treatment plant headworks, pump station, bar screen, step screen improvements, roughly 75% completed, as well as at the wastewater treatment plant, the mechanical electrical project now over 90% completed. At the wastewater treatment plant, we met all federal and state guidelines and treatment of sewage. We had 1.7 billion gallons of influent that passed through the plant that met standards. We put it back into the Kansas River and cleaner than the water is flowing from western Kansas. And that's important. The flooding stressed our system, stressed our plant, our staff, and we still didn't have to bypass raw sewage into the Kansas River. We were able to meet all requirements. And again, that comes from past leadership and being strategic about the improvements at the wastewater treatment plant and investments into our sanitary sewer and our wastewater treatment plant, something to be proud of for past commissioners, and I certainly got a project I'm going to talk about for the future that's strategic. Stormwater side, Delaware Storm Sewer Project completed, purchase Eric already mentioned is the flood mitigation, Campus Creek Box, expansion of the Riley County Health Department detention pond. My perspective on the Wildcat Creek detention analysis and the Fort Riley Creek detention analysis is complete, and the ball is in your court. I believe from my perspective, it stalled for political and bureaucratic red tape, so I need leadership to help move those projects forward. Okay? So that's kind of what I need from commission on those. That's from my perspective. We've had that technical analysis of what's needed and what needs to be done. Let's see here, we started designing the levee improvements, 6th and Houston Downstreet, I'm sorry, Downtown Storm Sewer, Capital Improvement 1 is already out the bid and will start this winter and go into next year, very large project. Rosen Cutter Box is under design. Turtle Creek Boulevard North Channel improvements is also under design. Smith &amp; Manfax Drainage Way, updating the drainage design manual. Browning and Katie Lane Storm Sewer improvements is under design. And of all these projects, there was numerous things. Eddie mentioned it earlier. He had like seven or eight pages, I think we had about six pages of accomplishments that we turned in at the end of December of 2019. But weather really played havoc. Hot Scott did a great job of highlighting various departments and sections that prepared and helped operate at the EOC, but it stressed my staff. There's other things we didn't accomplish. There are streets we didn't get to and didn't repair that I wanted to because we were running pumps trying to keep from the interior of downtown from flooding. Same thing with snow and ice. It was extremely harsh on our roads, and winter extended into time periods greater than we wanted. 2020 overall overview operations, as always, you know, we're going to operate the water and wastewater plants. you know, we're going to operate the water and wastewater plants in compliance as well as our stormwater discharge permit. Snow and ice operations will continue to lead the way in the state of Kansas, in my opinion. We've spent a lot of time in training, calibrating, trying to be as efficient as possible for materials so that we're not spreading too much, we're not spreading too little. And we'll continue to do that. Continue to do basic street maintenance for our crews for potholes, patching, my favorite, grading gravel roads that we still have in the city and gravel alleys. Engineering has a heavy workload. We have a lot of projects that they'll be managing, whether they're designing in-house or out-of-house, managing those consultants. So 2021 key initiatives. I do want to talk about the BioSolids Land acquisition. For some of you that I gave tours, I think I highlighted that. That is going to be critical. That is a strategic item for Public Works and for the community, unless you want to all tell Scott not to issue any more building permits in the future. As the community continues to grow, our tonnage or the amount of gallons in which we are generating at the wastewater treatment plant, we need more land so that we can continue to meet the guidelines of that program so the community can continue to grow. And those items will be coming before you. I've already kind of highlighted in the past the N-Bath contractor offices. It's a CIP project for 2020, and putting those down by the traffic shop as well as a joint maintenance facility. Eddie kind of highlighted that earlier. And I also mentioned just the numerous projects, and I'm not going to go through the list for 2020. We have a lot on our list that we have to, everything from design, bid, manage during construction, pay contractors, deal of conflicts, so on and so forth. So that kind of leads me to department priorities requests, and really my request of the commission. And I'm going to read this to you. This is our mission statement for the City of Manhattan. The mission of the City of Manhattan is to sustain order, protect public safety, promote public health, preserve the built environment, enhance economic vitality. The city supports a regional community in which individuals, families develop and thrive. So for Public Works, the built community, the built environment is very important. That's pretty much everything we do every day, preserving it, maintaining it, health, drinking water, wastewater side. And we'll do that. We'll be, we'll be good at that. The challenges that will come forth is the leadership that we need from you all and direction on key strategic goals and objectives. In the past, when you all go off to your retreat, sometimes I feel like we get 10 pet projects, 10 pet projects, 10 pet projects, 10, two, and 20 pet projects. We need, we need help on the strategic. You're going to have some big topics coming up. You're going to have topics, and Eric already highlighted, Green Valley annexation or Portland County annexation. That's going to be a big topic for you. And it has a lot of impact, at least to my departments. We have impact to Scott and some others, in how do we go forward and what that direction is, and then we'll go from there. So circling back to that mission statement, you know, the other big question to the commission, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, are our city employees important or not? You've heard every department head before me speak about OEI. To me, it's quite simple. In Public Works, I need quality employees to perform physical tasks. You can't pull out your phone, tap on an app, and a pothole just magically gets filled. It doesn't happen in my world. Valves don't get turned, things don't happen without those employees that are trained, dedicated, and willing to work through harsh environments at times. So with that, those employees are needed in my department in order to meet the City of Manhattan's mission statement, sustain that built environment. And as I mentioned, every department head before me tonight made a case. And I really believe if we were a private company, we're probably not heading in the right direction as an employer of choice. We need to turn that around. It's hard to say. I've been here for 15, I'll be here 15 years in April. And that's hard to say because I've been a big part of that in upper management. And it is eye-opening in some of the surveys that we've done. We do need to change, and we need your help to turn it around. So with that, as you head off into your retreat, look forward to your direction and guidance in the future. Mayor, any questions?
Thanks, Rob. Questions for Rob?
I believe there's an app that is called, is it Report It? That if you push a button, a pothole will be filled.
Yeah, it's filled in five minutes.
But seriously, I wanted you to maybe, I appreciate that you're keeping track of how much is going into the road, the ice, the snow clearance, how many, you know, how much that's costing taxpayers in terms of man-hours and supplies and all the prep that goes on. We're unlikely to be at a point where it makes sense to pull back, but I think the more we keep track, the more data we have to make an informed decision. At some point, there's other larger communities, as you said, we, if we do grow, there's, Topeka does not clear certain roads. There's positives to that, there's negatives to that. Our community's different, but without this data, we wouldn't, we'd be flying blind. So I think that's important. And if I remember right, it ranges anywhere between 20,000 to 70,000 per storm that goes into clearing the roads, and then another 7,000 every time we clear the runway at the airport. So that's, it's not, it's not a, it's a lot of money to a lot of people. It's a lot of jobs as we look down, down the road and down at our budget.
That's correct.
Other comments for Rob? Are you going to continue the policy of having patchwork, concrete replacement?
Okay.
Panel, panel.
Panel replacement. So I think, I mean, there's been criticism in the past when we kind of did the patch quill, you know, we had small patches here, little patches there, and so on and so forth. You can go back to some of those streets that we did do.
I'm just asking. Some of the streets I've seen have had that, and then others have the whole replacement. And I was just trying to figure out how you decide.
So I'll be quite honest, my preference, my staff's preference, what we've seen in terms of results, if we can salvage the curb and come two to three feet off the back of curb and then do a full-depth replacement, address the base, I think we're getting a better ride quality as well as durability compared to the past and how we used to do things.
How long do the curbs that you leave, how long do they last? Another 20 years or?
You know, it's a good question. It depends on how many times a snowfall hits it.
Yeah.
It, you know, it certainly can have, you know, at least another, it all depends. Could be another 10, 15 years for that curb. A lot of it, we have changed our concrete mix design over the years in terms of being more durable against salt intrusion or forgetting the technical term, ASR, which is basically susceptibility to saltwater. So when we do put the salt out and melt the snow and ice, saltwater is more viscous, and it can get into those microcracks easier than
Cause more damage.
And cause more damage to go through the freeze-thaw cycle X number of times in winter like we did last year, and you have more damage. So we have changed that mix design.
So are the curbs, it's pretty expensive. I mean, when you compare just the roadway versus the curbs, it cuts the cost quite a bit if you can spare the curb?
It costs, cuts costs as well as time. Because if you do remove the curb,
Yeah.
then you should have had survey in, because it has to do with the drainage system. We don't want to create duck ponds. So it's also a quickness in terms of how quickly we can get the main line back.
I just hadn't, hadn't had a chance to ask you those things. Thank you.
Those are all excellent questions. Any other questions?
Actually, I'd like some of your information. It's not in our material about the, you went really fast.
I went really fast because I didn't want to actually take two hours.
About the quantity of the repairs and all that. So that would be, I'd just be interested in seeing that. And that's for, that's for 2019, right?
That is for 2019.
Okay, good.
And you'll get a great opportunity in February when I come back for a street maintenance update, and I'll have all that in writing for you as well.
Good. Thanks. Rob, I think, you know, we don't have control of the weather, but we do have control of a lot of other things.
I thought you did.
I wish I did. I wish I had control of the weather. Yeah, I know. Labor Day, July 4th, expect floods. That's it, when you're not in town. But I think the community needed to hear all of these department heads and what's going on, because so much of it is, people just don't realize how smooth our community runs, how all of these things just happen, and we don't question it because we take it for granted until you hit that one pothole. We don't realize that thousands were fixed before that one. And, and I think with the Parks and Rec and all of these departments that presented, there are some things we can do. And certainly, it's going to fall on all of us to maintain the quality that we have in this community. And I think those are the discussions we're going to continue to have. And I, we heard your message loud and clear, and we'll see where we go with all of that.
Absolutely.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mayor.
So to close out tonight, I wanted to come back, and I think you've heard a lot. I think the new word, if you've never heard anything of our acronym, is OEI. It's one of the big things that we've certainly been working on for the last nine months internally, and wanted to make sure that you all heard what we've been doing. But some things that we came up with as we went through back through the PowerPoint was basically 2019, we made a high level of programs and service delivery with a focus on some future long-range plan and redevelopment. And I think you've heard from all the departments, their pride in the service delivery they've been able to accomplish and what they've been able to do with the talented staff that we have. But then, of course, the impact of flood and other weathers, one of the themes. 2020, certainly desire to improve service and organizational efficiency through the technology, and really want to invest in our staff, but also the focus, the need on staffing and organizational excellence initiative. We're hearing, like we said, some of the survey results, we think need a bit more attention. We think the work plan that we put together for OEI will help address that. We want to make sure you know what we're thinking. And then 2021, we will be challenged to meet the program and service demands. As you heard from opening our new facilities, maintaining the current level of service depends upon weather, what we're going to be faced with. But there are a number of new projects that you'll give us direction on here even next week. We talked about funding of our initiatives. But then, of course, we all recognize we're working in an environment of flat revenues. And so we just want to make sure you know from us what we see and what we know you have to work with and deal with as you go into your retreat. I just think about the retreat. Our initial agenda for now is we'll make sure we give you a recap of what we did on your goals to accomplish what was identified by the commission in 2019. We also do want to give you a little bit more information about the organization excellence initiative, where we actually have a work plan that's more detailed. Some of it was included in your meeting materials tonight, but so you can get the full breadth of what we're thinking with that OEI initiative. Of course, we think a lot of the conversation time will be spent talking about the budget considerations, particularly talking about the projects, that we're talking about the Point 3 initiatives that were on the ballot, and then clearly talking about your goals for the economic development renewal and how you want to engage the community on that going forward, if you want to go forward. And then lastly, spend the bulk of the time thinking about your specific commissioner goals and strategic priorities. What you heard tonight, I think, was a loud, common voice from the department heads about how we would like to have common strategic priorities that we can communicate that throughout the organization, help prioritize, and really focus our staff on what you want going forward and how we can fit all of our projects and work plans going together in unison. And so that is what we have for tonight. Thank you for your time and hearing us. And again, as you saw, I think Ron will add in the dedication and enthusiasm we have for the City of Manhattan. We share that with you in lockstep. Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions for Dennis or other staff members present?
I just want to take this opportunity and thank Dennis and the staff. They've worked hard over the course of the year to, and to pull this presentation together. Appreciate the time and dedication to focus on different aspects, especially on our OEI initiatives. And appreciate the commission's willingness to spend this time and sharing it with the community in this setting, I think is valuable, and to a lot of our employees who are watching to also have a better appreciation for the plan moving forward. So appreciate your time with that.
Yeah, thanks, Ron. I think, you know, I'm glad we did it this way, instead of having it at the Flint Hills Discovery Center so that the public can hear, and then we have it recorded, and, you know, we can play what each, each department is doing if we need to revisit some of those ideas. We will be talking about the sales tax initiative that didn't pass and a possible renewal of a different sales tax initiative as a funding source for some, some of the things as we move forward. And we also need to make sure we are communicating with our legislators in Topeka and at the federal level. You know, we talk about star bonds and all of these other types of grants and things that are happening. We have to understand that the entire burden should not just fall on our taxpayers continuously because they are also paying taxes at different levels, whether it's with the school board, whether it's at the county, whether it's, you know, for state programs or federal programs. We need to be, figure out how to get that money back to Manhattan. KDOT, you know, the governor said they're not going to use that as a bank anymore. Let's see what happens with some of those things and be on it. And the collection of online sales tax, hopefully we will see more coming our way. One of the things I heard loud and clear also at the retreat was quality of place and quality of life. And that's what all of our department heads provide, because everything just goes so smoothly that we don't have high crime rate. We don't have fires where people are actually dying. We don't have injuries because of our roads. It could be for a variety of other reasons, but it's not because we just have bad roads or anything like that. Clean water, we take it for granted. You know, we drink clean water out of our tap every day. We take our flooding situation that we don't have sewage problems all over the place because everybody's working 24/7 on some of those issues. But when something happens, definitely that's what everybody captures their attention to, and it spreads like wildfire. But because everything runs so smoothly, we don't pay attention as much and celebrate the things that are going well. But then it falls on all of us to make sure we are continuing to run that, our community as well as we can. We have lots of work to do. Next week, we're going to talk about projects. 31st, we'll talk about goal setting. I promise not to give you anything new from my side. I will try to incorporate my thoughts into projects that we already have going, because I know as a teacher, when you give more things to a teacher, they can't finish what they have, and now they have 10 more things they have to think about. So that's not going to happen, at least from, from this commissioner. Continue the discussion. Our public always knows that you are accessible. When we get communication, we always email it to one of you, and all of you are very good about responding quickly back to them. So I do appreciate all that you've done, and we will, we will be up to the task of making sure we continue what we have and see what else we need to do in the future. So, thank you. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Oh, two executive, darn it. Shoot, I thought, God. Can we leave? No, no.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Is there a public comment for this discussion? I don't see. Okay. Let's go into executive session. 10:10?
It's 10:10 now. I would suggest we go to 10:35 on the first one.
Okay.
And you can take a quick bathroom break as part of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, somebody?
Mayor, I would move that we recess into executive session to discuss potential litigation with the city attorney pursuant to the exception for consultation with legal counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 7543-9B2, and to resume the open meeting at 10:35 PM in this room.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brenda?
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabro?
Yes.
Mayor ready?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
First one's wrong.
Okay.
Companies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huh? Okay.
We are out of executive session. We need to go back into executive session. For how long?
Ten fifty.
Ten fifty. Anybody want to make a motion?
I think we have to clarify here. Mayor, after returning from executive session and if not recessing again for this item, some, I need to state that no bind, we all need to agree that no binding action was taken during the executive session. Therefore, no vote in the open meeting is needed. And then we can have a motion to go into executive session for another.
So we need to move on to executive session two.
Yes.
For fifteen minutes till eleven fifty.
Well, that's right. I don't want to do eleven fifty.
Was there a second?
Recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation with the city attorney pursuant to the exception for consultation with legal counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 754319B2 and to resume the open meeting at, and it was ten fifty.
Second.
Yeah. Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
No binding action was taken during the executive session. Therefore, no vote in the open meeting is needed. With that, we adjourn for the evening. Thank you.